I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning again, Marty.
Good morning, Marty.
We've got the agenda ahead of us. Is there any additions or corrections or additions to the agenda?
I don't think so.
I'll move to approve the agendas.
I'll second it.
You have a motion?
I just made a motion to approve the agenda.
And I seconded it.
All right, thanks.
Do you have any additions or corrections? Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, with that, we have the board minutes from last Monday's board meeting. Does everybody had a chance to review those?
I'm thinking a motion approved, not a demand set presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from last Monday's board meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, with that, we'll go down to the first item on our agenda is the IT and planning and zoning quarterly report, Carl.
Hello again, Mr. Carl.
Hello, Carl. Should have a copy of that. Yes.
Busy quarter.
Huh?
Busy quarter.
Lot of information there. Tell us about it.
Okay, a busier quarter.
Busier, well, maybe they can look that way. On the zoning side, we did the rezoning up in Brita and amending the zoning ordinances for shooting ranges and hunt clubs and then approving those ranges in one hunt club. Board of Adjustment and Zoning Commission met jointly to get that accomplished, so that went well. Two floodplain issues, you both are aware of both of them, the one down by Manning, that you tabled action on that, and I was contacted by Cody Stuffus, who would be Jane's son, and he was going to contact DNR to see where they needed to go on with that one now by Manning for that office, so. My conversation with Jason Khan from DNR was that they're two to three months out on permits, so it'll take a while for that to cycle through the works. Speaking, and then the other issue we'll talk about on the next agenda item in more detail. Talking about the floodplain maps, those maps that we used to display that was part of the DNR project, LiDAR project, to draw floodplain boundaries for the whole county. If you remember, just the basic southeastern portion from about Templeton up to Willie and southeast is the only thing that we have officially mapped for floodplains. And so everything else in the county wasn't mapped, now it is with the DNR project. We did get a letter on April 8th that they've initiated a flood mapping project for our community and that the preliminary firms, which is the flood insurance rate maps, which is what we actually administer, will be sent to our county in June of this year. They'll have an invitation for a final community coordination meeting in open house approximately one to two months after that, so we'll be able to review the maps and see if there's any, again, and see if there's anything that stands out to us that would have a negative impact. And then it's estimated the maps will be effective in November of 2016, so we wouldn't have regulatory authority in those areas until at least November 2016. And then that will greatly expand the floodplain stuff that I have to deal with, so just kind of let you know where that's at. And then I guess we can kind of table talking about the Maple River project here until the next agenda item. So that's pretty much it for zoning. GIS, the big project has been the comm center project, where they put in the two GeoLink servers and basically they did convert our geodatabase, what they're calling the Iowa Standard for addressing street segments, street center lines, that kind of thing. And basically it's just adding a whole bunch of fields so that at some point we'll be consistent across the state in what those fields are in those databases, consistent in how those fields are named, like a house number will be HNO and just everything standardized across the state so that we can do emergency management a little easier when it crosses county lines or crosses PSAP lines, which is the answering point lines. We don't just do calls for Carroll County, we extended into Crawford, Shelby, Audubon, Guthrie, Carroll, Green, and SAC, and I don't think we'd get into Calhoun, but anyhow, so we've got addressing in street segments in our mapping system for those portions of those counties, so as they overlap, then we need to be consistent with standardization. So that's been part of this project as well. Also geocoded what's called the alley database, which is when a call comes in on a wireline, that gives you the address of where it comes in, and then it feeds it into the GIS system and locates it automatically on the map for the dispatch. So I did do a geocode of that against our current GIS data, so that's one of the projects I'm fixing up right now as well. So that and the emergency service district boundaries are going to take a lot of work. All this isn't just in response to this project with the comm centers, it's in response to next generation 911, which will all be based off of GIS.
So this was all with the GeoCom project?
That's all been with the GeoCom project, but it's really bigger than that. It's...
This is underlying things that must be done in order for it to...
Whether we did the GeoCom project or not, so for on the GIS side, those things would have to have been done.
Have you been asked to come Thursday night? I'm sorry?
No.
Okay. I just know it's on the agenda, they're just going to give us an update on it, so perhaps you're not in this.
No, I hadn't heard about it.
This alley database, that just, does that work with landlines, period?
That alley just works with the landlines. Cell phones come in, two different types, there's phase one and phase two. Phase one, if it just gives you a tower, and so it locates on the map where the tower's at, and then the tower actually has a range of where that call might have come from. And that was kind of the first step in mobile phones. And then phase two actually gives a GPS location, so it locates to where that phone's at.
Right.
And this locates both of them.
So on the phase two phones, will this alley database...
It doesn't use the alley.
It doesn't?
No, but I'm using the alley database when I geocode it to make sure that I'm picking up all the landlines.
Yeah.
Because once we get to next generation 911, they won't let us flip over until we are 98% accurate, or that database has to match what I've got in the GIS and those in the MSAG, which is the master street addressing guide, and that's road segments, and the alley database, which is landline locations. So they have to have a 98% match.
Thank you, Carl. How close do you think they are as far as cellphone locations?
Well, if you're doing phase one, it's...
Not there.
It's not there. Phase two is, you know, you're talking, you know, 30 to 50 feet, depending on what satellites are there, how good the GPS is in the phone, you know, so there's a lot that can be...
There's a lot of variables.
A variable there. And the call center can re-hit that phone, and so it will narrow that down, you know, if they hit that phone again and pull in those GPS points, it'll get better as they hit it, so. I was downstairs this morning and, because we'd had some issues with calls locating, and they'd worked on it last week, so I was just down there and curious, and 911 call came in, it happened to be a landline, and just took her right to the point, I mean, just like that, zoomed right to it for the dispatch. They'd had a couple of other calls that I wasn't there when they came in, but they were down by Coon Rapids, and all we had was a tower. And so they located at the tower, but you were, you know, who knows exactly where it was unless they gave an address. And then as soon as they gave the address to the dispatcher, he can put that in, and then it will locate to that address. But as far as automatically zooming to it, if that, if you didn't have a GPS or an address, it's pretty general.
Thank you.
And then you can see all the maps we produced this week or this month.
Quarter.
Yes. Been a long morning already. On the IT side, again, the big project was setting up the, a couple of things, we had the GeoLink project, set up two web servers in our virtual network, and we also had to do some networking issues. We had Alliance come in and help us with that, because when we went from the city at being in charge of the comm center to the county, they were on a different subnet. And so we kind of had a Band-Aid effect to be able to communicate between our network and that network prior to that, and we really hadn't addressed it, and so we finally had Alliance come in and help us with the networking through some switching and routing to connect us to the comm center more permanently. And that helps us not only with this project, but comm center hosts our Shieldware, which the sheriff's office uses and the jail uses, their booking program and everything runs through Shieldware, but that's housed in the comm center, because the city also does use that, uses that program, and so the main server for that is in the comm center, so we needed to improve the communications there. So we got that taken care of, and set up those two web servers and a load balancer. We had quite a discussion on whether or not they actually needed this load balancer between the two GeoLink servers, these web servers, but it takes me about five hours to update one of those servers. So if we only had one server and didn't have a load balancer, then that system would be down for at least five hours while I did the update. This way, you just tell it the one, the main server is offline, it flips over to the secondary server, first you update it, the secondary server, and then tell it that the first server's offline, it flips automatically to the second one, and then you update the first one. So that way you're never without the locating service, but it works pretty slow. Any other questions on that project at all? The other big thing, of course, was the HIPAA policy, got that through, again, we still got some work to do on that, but at least it's rolling along. I did go to a training last week, I think it was, and with ISAC, and it's surprising how many counties were in the same boat as us as far as HIPAA policy and things like that. You know, I know in 2005 we had to adopt that security policy, but some counties hadn't even done that yet, and so it's, they're kind of flying out there with a lot of risk. I think we're setting pretty good as far as having our policy in place, we just got to get some of the procedures nailed down, you know, and meet with the department heads that are affected, and then we'll have training. ISAC does have a video that they did, it wasn't a very good one back in the fall, so they're working on a new one for employee training, because that's part of our contract with them, that we'll get, you know, some generic employee training. Then we'll be able to show that video to the employees that are required to get annual training for HIPAA, and then customize it to meet our situation. So good to have that policy in place. The other thing that Courtney and I met with Western Iowa Networks, and we haven't heard back from them on our phone system, as far as what upgrades might be needed or what it would cost, they just, we haven't heard anything from them for quite a while. So we'll have to get back on them to get us an estimate of what it would take to upgrade our system. Right now, we can't get phones to work with our system if we lose phones, or if we need to add, you know, if you add an employee, we don't have any phones to give them at their desk. So we either need to, they need to either resolve that issue, or we need to look at doing an upgrade on the system to work with the newer phones, but we haven't got any price back. Also set up a video file NAS, a network attached storage for the sheriff's department, and we're acquiring all their body cameras and car video to go on a separate storage device and keep them off of the server. Those files can be a huge discussion with the sheriff and county attorney, ones that they'd like to keep for two years. Those are, that's a lot of storage. And right now, we've got a NAS that we're putting that on, and maybe they'll review it down the road, depending on how much they actually turn those body cameras on, we'll see how long that storage will last. I think we have like eight terabytes right now in that NAS system. We'll see how it goes, and we may have to adjust that down the road ways.
Now, dash cams are on all the time, body cams they turn on as needed?
Dash cams come on, I think, when you turn the lights on.
Okay.
And then the body cams, they have to turn them on. But the body cams are actually the ones that take the most.
The body cams are?
They're higher resolution video, and so they take up more space. And depending on what's going on, if they're going into a domestic situation, they could be in there an hour, hour and a half, you know, and that thing is running the whole time, you know, so, yeah, it was kind of one of those things where sheriff was glad to get a grant to buy his body cams, and that's probably the cheapest part of the whole operation.
Always is.
We've got to get the, we've got to do the backend of it and store the data. Anyhow, that's, we'll see how that runs, see where we stand in six months, a year, what kind of storage we've got. And on the back page, I guess, just to kind of break down of ours, I think as I said, when we took over the comm center, we'll see it grow. You can see back in 2013, down about five numbers there, so it was 2.65, and then it went up to 5.86, and this last quarter was 15. Of course, that project really added some hours, and it'll ease back off, but it's extra, extra time for 2019. So any questions on any of this?
Not here.
Anything else regarding that quarterly report? Matt, we'll go down to the second item, is to set the public hearing for zoning change for Maple River Junction.
The zoning commission was asked on Thursday night to rezone a piece of property north of Maple River. Actually, there's two parcels that, fortunately, it's been surveyed, it hasn't been filed yet, but that property's been kind of a mess as far as ownership and where the lines actually lay, and so we do have a survey for this property that is being requested, so that's good. But the request is to rezone that from A1 agriculture to B1 business, and it's for the proposed construction of a bar restaurant by Mike Pooks, and the zoning commission did recommend that you have a public hearing on that and change the zoning. May I like to set a public hearing date for, what is it?
May 11.
May 11.
10 o'clock.
On that, Carl, we talked about that was a floodplain. Have you heard any more how much they're going to have to build that up to get it out of floodplain?
Unofficially, I've heard at least four feet. They got to come up to the road.
Okay.
And they've had a preliminary discussion with DNR, and so anything that you guys, what the zoning commission did was say it was contingent on their addressing the DNR, their approval by the DNR, and also that they solved their wastewater issue that they would have to do there too, so. So it's a contingent, and the recommendation is, you know, if you guys do this before DNR gives their approval, it'd also be to do any rezoning contingent on their approval from DNR and resolving their wastewater issue and that kind of thing, so.
You know, in discussion with one of the owners, they talked about it being pizza and sandwiches, but I think dis for safety's sake, if they ever brought food in, I had a little bit of discussion with Kerry on this as far as putting the grease traps in before they tie in dollars in case they ever go to that measure.
No, no, no. And that, that isn't on our zoning end, but yeah, that would be wise to require that before.
Now, is it my understanding that part of the DNR's involvement is it will set the elevation, is their DNR involvement only in regard to floodplain, or so that they have adequate fall to go tie into the septic?
No, the, my involvement with it would be that it's just a floodplain.
Strictly flood.
Yeah. There's a different, talking with Dan Olson from the regional office probably is more down the septic side or the waste side. They're different divisions of DNR.
So they will get involved in that?
I've talked to Dan, it'll be up to us to basically go forward with that as far as the grease trap, that would be up to us, but be involved in environmental health and care, and Kerry and us.
And enough fall.
Yeah.
I mean, there's two different issues the way that I'm saying it.
From what I understand, the fall isn't an issue, because supposedly they want to tie in by that manhole on the east side of the road, supposedly that's 11 foot deep, they need to bore under, in talking to one of the local plumbers, they're looking at tying in by that manhole, so I don't think fall will be an issue. But that's something we'll have to...
We'd need to ensure that it isn't.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but DNR's elevation requirements are just to get it probably a one foot above the floodplain.
We're going to need to be, what, how much, can we handle a lot of volume if they're going to go that way?
In the discussion that I've had with Jared Hayes, or not Jared Hayes, yeah, Jared Hayes, he says that the volume isn't an issue right now, what they're bringing in there is about 6,500 gallons per month, and things set up for about 30,000 gallons a month. So he said the volume shouldn't be an issue. I've had that discussion with Jared already.
Should we seek the opinion of the engineer? Now, we didn't have a lot of engineering issues with that one, like we did Mount Carmel. You know, that guy ended up being kind of hands-off of the whole thing afterwards, but the engineer on this one...
Well, there was no engineer at Mount Carmel, basically.
Well, you're right. But was it FOWF in Maple River?
I could ask him.
Would it not behoove us to seek their opinion on that?
I could ask. Did he say how much volume they thought they would be putting on?
He didn't say it, but at this point, he didn't have that.
I've had some questions about it. What I really would like, would help me, is if I had an aerial picture that showed where everything was going to happen.
You will, that's the kind of information you get at the public hearing.
Okay. Nothing prior to that?
I have you come down and talk to me, but I don't know the exact building location, but I can get your property lines and that kind of...
We have that initial picture, you know?
I just, I just got the, yeah, I just got the preliminary survey from CND on Friday, so I didn't have time to get it rotated in, I'm still looking at...
It's basically the way it's set up, they bought from two different, there's two different parcels that are, what they're kind of looking at. This was low parcel, this was the Brahmer's, so they bought it. When, in discussion with Mike and Brian a couple weeks ago, they're talking about putting the building right in this area. And then, then the sewer line that they'd be tying into would be over here on the east side of the road.
No, north of the trail.
Oh, it is north of the trail?
Yeah, it is.
That is a long trail, here's a trail. That's a long fall.
Here's a trail.
That is north of the trail.
Yeah, because they talked like they'd have to bore through the road here to get it through.
Yeah.
And talking to the plumber.
I think there's one, I think there's one about right here.
Right in there is where that manhole is.
I think. Right here's the trail, that would be north of the trail, that'd be south of the trail. You say it's south?
I say north, it's south of the trail.
Well, I thought it was north of the trail.
Okay. Well, I've been out there, I don't remember looking, I wasn't looking for manhole.
Yeah, it comes down here and then crosses.
Here's the trail.
Yes.
And it's north of the trail.
Are you sure it's north of the trail?
Yeah.
Okay, well...
Yeah, it's north of the trail. Because you can back up, you can get on the trail and you can back up into it. So it's north of the trail. Where do they plan on putting it?
The building is, they're looking at right in this area.
Okay.
I think that would be a floodplain.
I will pull some prints out, I think the manhole's over here, it comes down here and then crosses.
Oh, well. I'll take a look, I think it's, that's kind of what they're looking at, it's his septic.
Well, according to what you said, Marty, I had the location down, right?
Testers in the south side.
I told them where the location was, they questioned that.
Because of the flood issue. But that's all right. We'll get, we'll get the information. Maybe talk to me tomorrow, or, you know, to us, I have time to rotate in that, the new survey or the proposed survey.
It's, okay, I probably won't be here tomorrow, but we'll get to you sometime. Any other discussion there? Now, we're, in order to set the public hearing date for May 11th at 10 o'clock?
I will move to set the public hearing date for the proposed zoning change in Maple River Junction for May 11th at 10 a.m.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Carl.
Thank you, Carl. Have a good week.
You too.
Okay, with that, we'll go down to the third item on the agenda is to set the public hearing for Stangle Site, DNR Construction Committee, and that's in section 17 of Washington Township. Last Thursday, had discussion with Dan Olson about setting that public here, or that site review up, as of, they just got the paperwork in on Wednesday for it, and I left it with him to get in touch with me when they want to get that done. I said we'd like to get it done here in the next week or two, so we'll have to go out a little bit of time there to give us time to get the site reviewed done.
I'm hoping to do it May 18th.
Okay, yeah, that would be worked out.
On 9:30.
Okay. That's a, okay.
That should give us enough time to get out there.
That should give enough time to get things going.
Weather permitting.
Yeah.
And I kind of, that's kind of the last date we could have it, based on when the DNR wants their stuff back.
Sam, we have a budget amendment at 10 that day.
Right.
Okay, so 10:30?
9:30.
Or 9:30, I'm sorry. I make a motion to that effect.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to set the public hearing for the Stangle Site on May 18th at 9:30. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, with that, we'll go down to the payables, next item on the agenda.
I do have one that came in this morning, it would be for plants, we're out front for the summer, we always plant, and those big plants out there.
There was some plants on the claims, there's additional plants.
This would be additional.
Okay.
Well, the first time I went through it, I went through the first part...
I went through the first part with, uh, and then I saw this figure and I said, "How did it get so huge?" I mean, just.
Rolling hills.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And it wasn't in, in the department, in this part of, in the first part of it. I, I guess I don't understand why, why it wouldn't have been. Except, yeah, until you go to, uh, go to the fund summaries and the account summary, then you can find it.
No, it's on there, um.
Uh, page four, kinda in the middle of the page.
Yeah, right there, fund six on, yeah, page four. It's right there.
Oh, fund ten, here it is.
Yeah.
I guess I was looking at it in numerical order, but.
But you're right, it was over half. In fact, it was sixty-two percent of our bills, of our expenses, that one bill. And the next biggest, another bigger one is our audit, which is thirty-six thousand dollars. That's.
Yeah, it's a couple thousand more than last year.
Yeah, that added up.
A lot of that has to do with that new software, though, because they were requesting, prior to that, they'd say we need this report. It was very easy to get it to them, but with the new software, it wasn't, wasn't so easy. So, I'll look and get that through down next year.
I'll make a motion through the table.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
There's no other discussion? Get a motion and a second to approve the payables. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Okay, we'll go down to the fifth item is the Neese Township trustee appointment, and Dean had worked on that, and the appointment that he brought forth was Brett, Brett Ludwig?
I talked to Brett last week, and he would be okay with accepting an appointment, so.
Ludwig?
Brett Ludwig. And I'll make a motion to that effect.
Okay, got a motion and a second?
I'll sec, I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve the new Neese Township trustee, Brett Ludwig. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Okay, with that, we'll go down to the sixth item is the board of adjustment appointment. Craig Rolls has moved, and so we, I talked to Gary Earlback from Templeton. He is willing to accept that position. So I would make a motion to appoint Gary Earlback for the board of adjustment.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second? Any other discussion? From that, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same, motion carries.
Thank you, Dean and Marty, for getting those appointments. It's good to have full slate.
Thank you for stepping up, too.
Yes, more than happy to do it.
Okay, with that, we'll go down to item number seven is the fiscal sixteen budget amendment discussion in the package. You laid an amended one down for us?
I did, but we're gonna have to redo that.
Do it again?
Well, after Doug got me, before I got in here. Um, without going into too much detail, because we might be talking to some HIPAA issues, they're having some issues in the jail, new issues, and he's requesting an additional, let's see where he's at right now. He's requesting, prior was requesting twenty-two thousand. He'd like to add another five to that. So if you look at the. Trying to see where this is at. So if you look at the, um, the notice of public hearing, under public safety and legal services, um, it's thirty-five thousand, seven fifteen. It'll actually be forty thousand, seven fifteen. It's kind of in the middle of that page there, line eighteen.
How much you got?
It'll be, um.
Forty-nine?
Forty, forty thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars.
I know we can't get into detail, but it's for, uh, medicine primarily?
Um, no.
Okay.
No, but, um, it is medical related.
Okay.
So he said if any of you had any questions, he'd be happy to speak to you, but I, I don't really wanna say what he said.
That's fine.
I don't know that I should. Um, a couple changes from the last time. Um, after talking to Mark, we were able to remove the tough hooks for the ambulance. There was some miscommunication there apparently. That was eighty-seven, forty-six. We were able to take off of that, so.
Okay.
That helps.
That's why you figured forty, 'cause you add five, five thousand, that'd, you know, okay.
So, um, I guess, I was so happy I got this fixed and I messed it up, but, so if you look at the total that we're asking would be eighty-three, six forty-five, you would add five thousand dollars to that. Otherwise, they're worth any changes.
So the total would be eighty-three, or you add five thousand dollars to that?
Yeah, you need to add five to that, because, I didn't know about it until I was walking in here. You should have a new one right there.
Oh.
That was the updated one as of this morning that now needs updating?
Yeah. So our total.
She should do them in pencil.
I should. So the amendment, the revenue side is not changed. It's five ninety-six, and the expenditures will be eighty-eight thousand, six forty-five. And I will get this published today, so we're able to have our hearing, and we've already set that, but it'll be May eighteenth at ten o'clock. So it's probably a good thing we did some checking. Pushed it back a day or a week.
When is it gonna be, Courtney?
Uh, May eighteenth, ten o'clock. And once I make the changes, I'll email you a new one, so you can have a, have a correct.
Tried to spare you eighty-seven hundred dollars. It didn't turn out so well.
Well, it's still, we're still ahead.
Yeah, we're still sparing eighty-seven hundred.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, with that, we'll go down to the next.
While we're talking about the budget, we got our monthly large thing, and, um, I guess we're already taking action on it, but, um, I talked to Courtney about this, and we reviewed it, and there's some, uh, the general supplemental is quite low, uh, at ninety thousand. So that, that is a concern, and, um, we're not sure how that's gonna wash out, and, uh, Courtney explained how that happened. Um, she could probably explain again. And on the other side, our local option looks very good at one point one. The highest it's ever been is one point three, and that was, uh, both in May and March of two thousand and thirteen and fourteen, and then, of course, in March of two thousand and fourteen, when it was at practically highest level, we loaned seven hundred and four thousand out. So it was down at six hundred and fifty-five thousand a year ago. And so we're building it back up, and within about three months, it'll be at a record high, and that's very good. And also our medical, if you see that, at one point two, that's a very good number. Uh, could you explain the general supplemental on that?
Absolutely. Um, this was the first year we had a budget for, um, commercial and industrial rollback and business property tax credit, and I, it was a guess, 'cause this is the first year we'd done it, and I was a little high. So general basic, rural services, and general supplemental. The other two funds, generals, general basic and rural, they carry big balances, so you didn't see that. But supplemental technically doesn't carry that much of a balance. Usually about a hundred thousand, maybe a hundred thousand when you get towards the end of the year. So that's why we couldn't really see it in supplemental is because we don't carry that large of a balance in it. So it has to do with business property tax credits not coming in as high as what I guessed they would, and the commercial industrial rollback. There was some factors in there with TIF and things like that, so. I would propose that if we got too low, that we would be concerned with it being in the negative, that we could possibly do an inter-fund loan from local option until we collected some tax money in September. But, um, that would of course need board approval, but we could just keep our eye on it and see what happens.
We, yeah, we won't take any action on that, but we'll just keep an eye on it, and just want everybody to be aware of it at a time, and, um, the whole scheme of things, um, I think we encourage our department, department heads not to put too much padding in that, and we can do that because we do have this local option to fall back on if something like this happens. I guess the only other way is if you have no reserve like the local option, then everybody has to really have their budget, 'cause there's no place to go, and that actually causes, uh, increased in unnecessary taxation, so.
My question was, um, it, would it not be a consideration as another option? Can we not take it out of the general basic reserve?
You could take it from there or local option.
I have that same question.
I, I, you know where I'm going with that, so, but yeah.
Yeah, either one. It's, that'd be totally your decision.
If I want a deep study, that's probably the option I would prefer.
Yeah, and we're talking short-term, you know?
Sure.
I would say is, would be. Yeah, and might not even, might just be a couple of months, depending on, you know, 'cause that balance is factored in. Everybody's spending every last penny that they budgeted, and that doesn't usually happen. There's usually some carryover, so, and I, I know in my elections and supplemental, there's gonna be carryover, so.
And everything else looked real good. In fact, some of these are very high, but like, they're gonna get spent, like, capital projects, conservation, uh, we know where that's going, and you can follow that trail pretty quick and things like that.
We'll be doing a transfer.
Ambulance, ambulance, there's gonna be a new vehicle.
Follow that trail?
Yeah.
And there'll be a transfer coming from rural to general.
Meaning there.
We'll be doing the transfer to Dave, or, um, so it'll be coming out of rural and out of general basic, that portion that he gets after we collect taxes, so. The balances look a lot different. Next one.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go down to item number eight is the UTV ordinance, uh, discussion, and in the package, there was a, uh, ordinance that John has put together.
Good morning, John.
Good morning, John.
John take off with it. Is, as far as the ordinance, do you have any comments or anything towards the ordinance, John?
Well, I sent you all an email to, to basically describe the landscape. Uh, right now, you cannot operate ATVs or, or, uh, what they refer to as LTVs. I call them side-by-sides on county roads. Except there is an agricultural exception. There's an exception for people who are doing surveying, like, there's an exception for people working on road projects. So you can allow them, under all circumstances, to operate on county roads, or you can have some limited allowance. So I did a survey of all the ordinances that I could find, uh, looked at half a dozen, and I put in what are some of the more popular exceptions. The ordinance says you can operate on county streets, except, and, and one of the things that seems to be a concern is, is, uh, class C roads, class B roads, paved roads, uh, speed limits. Some of the ordinances have a provision for a county registration scheme. I did not include that. If you wanted, I can. I don't see that as being cost-effective to try to sell people five-dollar stickers to put on an ATV. I don't see the point. There is already a state registration scheme. People that have them exclusively for agricultural purposes don't need to be registered, so they have an exception.
But, but you have that in here, though. Section six.
Requires them to be registered to operate.
State registered.
But that's a state.
Okay, all right.
So I just put in some of the more popular ones. Uh, there, you can do par, all, none. Uh, I note that, uh, the side-by, what I call the side-by-sides, you know, like the gators. I think Coon Rapids allows those, this type of stuff. Uh, Glinton and Templeton have golf carts. I'm not sure about anybody else.
And Carroll does. Carroll has golf carts.
Two and from the golf course.
And that's what Frida has, two and from the golf course, direct route, you know, if you're off the route.
Marty asked me to drop something up, so I did, and I, I have no, uh, dog in the hunt other than, uh, I, I hope that you would restrict them, and I use paved roads the more I thought about it, not allow them on the traveled portion of a road with a forty-five mile per hour or greater speed limit. I don't wanna be coming down the OCO at sixty miles an hour, I mean fifty-five.
Yeah.
And coming up on somebody doing twenty in the middle of the road. I just don't, okay, I, I don't like that. I, I think that's a big safety issue. And I don't really like them driving, driving around at ninety, but, um.
You don't have that in this?
Uh, no, no, I didn't.
And I talked to you, we talked about it.
Yeah, you know, you could just say no.
There's some of them have a sunset, sunset, or sun, sunrise to sunset clause in there, but I don't know how.
Yes, he does. He has.
One half hour.
That's what I thought.
Eleven.
I thought that was fifteen.
And, uh, one half hour.
I thought that was daily.
Yeah, it's in there.
Or you could go, uh, uh, but anyway, there's, there's different views. Keep in mind that if you allow authorized riding on a roadway, that's fence to fence as opposed to traveled portion, so you can allow people to be on the shoulder, but not the traveled portion. Uh, but I just don't think they should be on the Willie Blacktop or the OCO or Frida.
Yeah, so anything that's higher than fifty-five, they're not supposed to be on.
Well, I'd go forty-five, because, um, I don't even know if they have any forty-five speed limits, but, um, I'd, I'd say more than, more than forty-five would cover the, what I'm gonna call the major county.
Right.
You know, I was looking through John, Crawford County, when they, they have a clause in there with, they must have a proof of insurance, and I talked with Tiger out at Olson Outdoor, uh, Sporting Goods, and he made the comment about having proof of insurance, and I don't know how hard that would be to show proof of insurance. I mean, most of them are insured, but, you know, like a car, I don't know if you'd actually have a card for an ATV or a UTV for proof of insurance.
Uh, I've never owned an ATV. I know, I used to buy golf cart insurance. I had a golf cart policy.
Yeah, full and or just libeled insurance? Was that's one thing he suggested, is having proof of insurance.
Insurance was addressed in, well, Marty, I think we gave us copies of the green, the Crawford and SAC, which, which are almost the same, they're very similar.
Right.
And, um, they both had referenced insurance as a requirement, or did not. That was one difference I noted. Um, I noticed several differences in them, and, um, after I dug into it, I, I thought you did a very good job. I, I know they got quite detailed about what the tire pressure and the weight and all that was for, um, a, um, eight, eight, all-terrain vehicle, but you just referenced it to that Iowa code section, which does all that for you. So you covered that pretty good. That's, that is what that Iowa code section is.
For example, banning people from operating them while they're intoxicated. Well, that's OWI. You don't, you don't need that.
Right, right. There, you, you, you just did a lot of referencing, saved a lot of paper here. Um, I know, um, they both said that you needed to have a driver's license. I didn't see that in yours, unless you were using the reference to the Iowa code.
It is in the Iowa code.
In the Iowa code you're required to, so that was covered there, too. Okay, yeah. And then, uh, one thing along with the sticker that, one of the counties, I think it was Crawford, is apparently they've got it set up where you can get it from the recorder's office. They tell them go to the recorder's office. You say they need to have, um, an ID number or something, or a sticker, I forget which. Registration, what was it?
Current.
Registration decal.
I've heard of that.
And the certificate on board.
That's it.
Which, I didn't quite understand, but they, they said you go to the, that county and that, uh, recorder's office has a decal.
I didn't know whether it was gonna be a plate and a sticker.
Yeah.
It'll be a card, so I just didn't, I just tried to have an ordinance that would fit whatever, however they do it.
It'd be similar to snowmobile.
Um, the one thing I did think, I, I thought you did a very good job, John, um, is basically on the level B and level C, you have to travel on the traveled part of the road. You can't be in the ditch, but on a blacktop, you need to be on the shoulder.
Or can you be on the ditch? Is that okay? I see people riding in the ditches all the time.
Well, yeah, basically on the hard-service roads, you can't be on it unless you're crossing over.
Right.
And my thought was that right away, um, what if, uh, they were living on the Willie Blacktop, where there's really not a shoulder to go on, and pretty tough ditch to go on? Uh, I, I didn't have an answer for that, but I, I can see your point. You don't wanna pop over a hill going fifty-five and finding somebody on that blacktop.
You didn't allow somebody the direct limited route to get to another road. Actually, Dean and I talked about that same thing. What if you live on a blacktop and you need to sit down a half mile?
That's what I was thinking, yeah. And maybe that's not the only place, but that was just one that popped in my mind, where, um, I kinda don't want them on the road, because you can come over a hill there on a pretty slow vehicle going fifty-five.
Right.
And there's really no shoulder for them either. So, that was a concern to me.
Dave Paulson expressed some safety concerns, and just to put it in perspective, people are killed on ATVs every year. Uh, well, seven hundred and fifty people on bicycles are killed every year in this country. Five thousand pedestrians are killed every year in, in, in this country. I mean, everything you have has an element of risk. So I think it's a matter of some reasonable use. My concern, and probably the one part of my email I hope you took to heart the most, people are doing this anyway. And I think when you have widespread violation of the law, it breeds disrespect for the law, and I think we should have something to accommodate reasonable behavior that's already. And I think we should have something to accommodate reasonable behavior that's already taking place. Or maybe not. Anyway, I'll, I'll save my personal opinions in whatever direction the board wants me to go. I'll draft up anything you want.
Well, my concern was having a lot of insurance like Neil said. The other thing is, what about any penalties? Does that cover some of these Iowa code sections?
Well, this ordinance proposes to make it as simple as we can, to be fined from sixty-five to six hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, I just, okay, that's fine. Those are the only two questions I had. And you, and you brought about the level B and level C. And those are probably the roads that even want them because they're going to go out there and they're going to start horsing around, tearing them up more, erosion.
That's addressed, the tearing them up roads is addressed.
Dave Paulson doesn't want them on C's at all. I can tell you that.
Because they're going to go out in the night.
They'll end up being a little party piece.
Yeah.
But I can see that's where you'd use it if you had a farm alongside.
That'd be the best place.
Yeah. I mean, there's two sides to that.
Yeah. Safe for dinner and on a, on a public highway. And according to Iowa code, as I understand it, if they're used exclusively for agriculture, none of this applies.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, there's an exception for that.
Right, so if you have a farm ATV and you're checking cattle or, or just using it, it says exclusively agriculture, it doesn't say park. I guess if you use it for agriculture, it doesn't allow you to do other things with it, basically. But then, then none of this applies.
You know, even in, I read the code over the weekend and, you know, it says for meals and beverages.
Bring lunches.
Yeah, you can bring lunches, yeah, if you want to. So I mean, it, I think John did an excellent job covering things that were necessary, not repeating. There are a lot of stuff in the Iowa code that's right out of, it just went from there to here, you know. So I think you did a good job of covering.
You can't legally take away the restrictions from the Iowa code. You can go more restrictive, but not less.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I think you did an excellent job. I don't really have any questions on it.
One thing I might add, if the state ever does decide to do something, it would supersede this, if they decide to do something as far as licensing that. And I pick them down the road at some point, who knows. Virginia, do you have a comment?
If you encourage the use of ditches, what about intakes, tiles, and that kind of stuff that's in those ditches? Damage to them?
I can't see them damaging them. I can see them damaging their vehicles themselves.
If you keep breaking the ends off, I.
I can't imagine ATV being too rough on anything like that, Virginia.
Some of these ATVs are getting big now.
Are they?
Thirty grand.
Their size of a small pickup.
Yeah, thirty grand for some of them.
Well, I'm not talking about cost.
No, I, I, no, they're big.
And there's a, there's a, there's a weight limit. There's a weight limit by the Iowa code, what's called an ATV, less than one thousand two hundred pounds. Twelve hundred pounds. After twelve hundred pounds, they're no longer all train vehicle. And I, I can't see a twelve hundred pound vehicle doing much damage out there. I, I can see them as being a danger issue, Virginia, if they're in the ditches and hitting them. And the snowmobiles deal with that all the time. I think, I think there should be some jurisdiction part.
Yeah, the only question I think I had of John was, a person shall not operate an all train vehicle in any park, wildlife area, preserve, refuge, or game management area except where official signs are designated. So if, if John goes out hunting deer, he can't, he cannot go and retrieve that deer if he shoots it, correct?
What you could do, I thought about that, Dean, we could, we could take that out and leave it to the conservation board to put in whatever rules they think they need for any particular area. You know, classic case, somebody just wants to go out on the river fishing and they sort of drive down in there. You could leave it to the conservation board. And they do have some areas right now marked, because we've had a, we've had a couple prosecutions on that, so.
So they can?
Oh, yes.
They're allowed.
Absolutely.
I mean, you said official signs, so designate.
You could, you could take that out completely and just leave it to them. Because they would have the authority under the ruling authority to make it a rule.
What was Doug's feelings on this? I thought maybe Doug would be here today for this. And I missed him Friday.
Yeah, I was going to think.
I think he wanted to be, he's busy.
We've got a security concern upstairs, so. Want me to go relieve him?
No. You're chopping at the bed, aren't you?
His comments last night, he talked about.
Why, yes, John, we do.
Well, thanks, John Evans, for all my questions. I think my only concern after this discussion is I think we should require some liability insurance, and I don't know what, what level. And then just the thought is your state's registration decal or something like that. And, and I kind of liked the other one where they had the decal available at the recorder's office, because I, I don't know, reading this, I would know what I would need. The current registration decal. Does they all have registration decals?
My impression, non-farmers already go and register because you can't go to one of these DNR areas without a registered vehicle. That's my impression. People already are doing that.
Okay.
But I could be wrong.
I, I, I don't have one, so that's probably why I'm asking the question myself.
I'll talk to Marilyn.
I guess the other thing is.
It's supposed to be the question.
Crawford County, they've got a twenty-five dollar fee on it, and that kind of forces them to go to the recorder's office. Is that something we want to look at?
If they already have a decal, I don't want to force them to do it. I, I would hope that if we do pass a resolution, it's going to solve more problems than it creates.
Of, of the people that I've talked to have no problem with the twenty-five dollar fee, the ones that I've talked to about doing it.
Or so your buddy's visiting from Jefferson and he wants to go out with you and then all of a sudden, boom, he doesn't have one and it's Sunday and, I don't know.
And that's kind of an issue with this, the county line thing. If you live on a county line, Crawford County has a decal, Carroll doesn't, SAC, they'll, every county.
It's going to be different.
Can and is different.
So this isn't mandatory, though, if you have one. Only if you.
Want to drive it on the road.
If you want to drive it on the road.
Right.
I think if you just want to buy an ATV and take it home and drive it out of your field, I don't think you need to do anything.
That's what I'm saying. If you're a farmer and, you know.
Maybe not a farmer.
Even if you're not a farmer, if you've got an acreage, or, yeah, whatever.
Maybe that's something we should visit with Marilyn about, just see what she thinks as far as the fee.
Do whatever's simple.
Okay, well.
We don't have to charge her any.
The idea of having to have ninety-nine county decals on your ATV, I mean. I mean, it's a little ridiculous, isn't it?
Yeah, they call it identification sticker from the office of the Crawford County Recorder, so that's who's done it. Twenty-five bucks.
I'll, I'll work on some insurance language. Direct route on paved road. Maybe I'll talk with conservation and see if they're comfortable with them just being able to designate what they want to designate as far as their views. I'll talk to Marilyn, get her feeling on how many, what is the percentage of registration? I don't know. Do those people register? I don't know. People I know register them because they go to these DNR areas. They've, they've got one up by Fort Dodge, apparently. Big mud hole and they get to go up there and come back and spend ten dollars of the car wash.
Carol did it off in the shower.
Okay, good enough. Okay, I'll send another draft out for you.
Alright, thanks, John.
Okay.
I wouldn't want them in my ditch.
And the ditch thing, I think, still needs a little thought.
You know, some people, I don't want them in my grass.
Anybody that has a, you know, a drainage tile break that's in a ditch, you know what they're going to blame it on, and whether it did it or not.
Yeah, we'll bring it back. I'll run it again next week if John Ruten doesn't update on it. Okay, it's ten o'clock. Next up, we have Holmes Murphy Health Insurance Presentation. Brent, welcome.
Hi, Brent. Welcome back.
Hi, Brent. We've got to pass out one for everybody. I think we have enough copies. Rachel's going to grab one.
Just for Rachel's sake, I will go ahead and do introductions. I'm Marty Dancer, chairman of the board.
Neil Fox.
Gene Myers.
Dean Shetler.
And Mark Beardmore.
Rachel Hunst, Courtney Erleback.
These, these two have communicated several times in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah.
I might as well put, bring Rachel with me because she did a lot of the heavy lifting and a lot of the legwork in, in getting to where we're at today. Inside of the proposals that we're going to go through, the contact information with anybody on my team who touched this relationship from the point in time where you guys hired us to where we got here today is there. I will tell you that all three of us are ultimately available to you guys at any point in time. We're going to go through a significant amount of numbers. And, you know, some of this is going to be stuff you guys are going to get pretty quickly. Some of it's going to be a little bit confusing. So if you guys step away from this today and you're thinking to yourself, gosh, what did that guy say again, or what does this mean and whatnot, certainly reach out to Karen, Rachel, or myself at any time to help kind of explain the insurance lingo and certain insurance terminology with respect to what we did. As I mentioned to Courtney, getting to where we're at today is a significant amount of backend work. And Courtney was absolutely instrumental and fantastic in working with us. The carriers come back to us with numerous requests and information, and Courtney jumped on it to the extent that she could gather the information in a, in a very quick fashion. So she was instrumental in getting us to where we're at today, so Courtney, thank you for that. The first part of this, we're going to kind of go through the state of the union with respect to where you guys are at today and with respect to what's going on with Walmart. And then I ultimately have two recommendations from which I would say, here's the, here's the way or the area that if I, that as your broker and as your consultant, these are the recommendations that I think I would make. One of them is going to be a very, very easy situation, and one of them's going to require some heavy lifting and a potential change in the insurance carrier from whom we work with. So really, we're going to come out of it with two specific questions that we're going to, or two specific options, or I guess directives that I would give you guys from this point forward. I also mentioned to Courtney, to the extent that your insurance company will allow us, and we believe Walmart will, we are absolutely happy to help leverage and negotiate from this point forward. So if you go down at path A or versus path B, and ultimately it's going to require us to go back to Walmart and do some negotiating and leveraging on your behalf, to the extent that Walmart will let us. And we believe that they will because we have a contract signed with you guys that acknowledges the fact that we're doing this on a project basis for you. And to the extent that they will allow us, I'm absolutely excited and happy to, to do that on your behalf in conjunction with Courtney and her team, okay, or you guys as well. So let's go to the first section, which is ultimately the medical claims section. And there's just a couple of things that I want to point out. So if you are a self-funded entity, we rely very, very heavily on Walmart and their underwriting team to give us what they expect you to have in claims, okay? So the first highlighted yellow column is the underwriter's expected claims, okay? The second highlighted column is where did our claims actually come in comparison to that expectation, okay? So let me just give you an example. In July of 2014, the very first line up there, the Walmart would have expected you to have a hundred and four thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars in claims. And collectively during that first month of the year, we only had twenty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-four. And so if you look at the fourth column from the right-hand side where it says paid versus expected, in that particular month, you ran at twenty-five point nine percent of expectations. So if we take the underwriter's guesstimate, and it's not really so much as a guesstimate, as they're usually pretty spot on, if they're giving us a dollar to budget for, we came in at twenty-five point six percent of the dollar. We came in at a quarter of the dollar. The next month, if you take a look again at that fourth column from the right, we came in at a dollar twenty-one. So we were twenty-one percent higher than expectations, a dollar twenty-four, a dollar six. And then our most recent two months, both November and December, we ran at ninety-four cents of expected and sixty-two percent of expected. So on the far left-hand side, in the middle, and the at a glance, six months into the plan year, you guys are running at eighty-nine percent of expected. So about ten percent lower than what the underwriter would have expected you to be, okay? And so these are the types of reporting that we generally kick out to our customers every single month that says, hey, in comparison to what underwriter expected, how did the plan perform? And, you know, this is the type of stuff that if, as we're approaching the renewal and we're running at ninety percent of expectations, then we know we should have a fairly competitive renewal. If we're running at a hundred and ten percent of expectations, then we know we potentially need to buckle our seatbelts. It's going to be a little bit of a rocky road, okay? One number that I'm going to ask you to carry forward, because you're going to see this number show up here in about ten minutes, is on the, again, left-hand side in the middle. Every employee, the aggregate claims per employee per month is seven hundred and sixteen dollars. So every employee that you have on the plan, you have a hundred and thirty-one employees on your plan. Those employees are averaging a hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-seven cents in claims per employee per month. So just kind of, seven sixteen's a number I want you to remember as we move forward, okay? So the plan in the first six months, and obviously we've got January, February, March that have now hit, we didn't have access to those updated claims information, but that would dictate as to how the plan is subsequently run during the first three months of this calendar, calendar year 2015. But again, the first six months of the year was really running great, at, at about ten, ten percent lower than the underwriters' expectations. The next page just incorporates the fixed costs. We do hire Walmart and we pay fixed costs for them along with our claims. So just, just to give you guys an idea, if you take a look on the right-hand side, your fixed costs every single month are going to be relatively consistent. And then your claims costs, if you just look at the bottom as a percentage, forty-two point four percent of your costs are fixed, and the remaining fifty-seven percent of your costs are related to your claims costs as a whole, okay? The next page is a really, really, really important page for you guys to grasp as well, because this will, this is going to lead to my recommendation, alright? You guys today, as a self-funded entity, you are self-funded up until the level of reinsurance protection that you have bought. So you're buying a fifty thousand dollar stop loss. So for all of our customers on the top left-hand side, we start tracking any individual on your health plan. Could be an employee, could be a spouse, could be a dependent. When they start hitting fifty percent of that stop loss level. So these are any individuals in the first six months of your plan that have had twenty-five thousand dollars in claims or higher, okay? And what we're able to tell you is you had six large claimants, again, in the first six months of this year. We can tell you if that was a spouse, an employee, or a dependent child, what their age is or within the tier of their age, and then whether they're still actively enrolled or not, okay? So with Walmart today, you are buying a fifty thousand dollar individual stop loss. So you're on the hook for every person's claims from zero to fifty thousand. Once somebody has a dollar above fifty thousand dollars, you've protected yourself in the form of having reinsurance. You did have three individuals so far in the first six months of the year who have gone above your specific deductible liability, okay? Claimant number one was a seventy-five thousand dollar claimant, and that's obviously gone over by twenty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-four. Claimant two was sixty-one thousand, and claimant three is at fifty-seven thousand. So the second number I want you to kind of remember is, and I circled it on mine, is the claims over the specific deductible, again, six months into this, is at forty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-three. So so far, again, we're only six months into the year, so we still have an addition of six months that's going to impact us. But we've had forty-four, roughly forty-four thousand dollars that Walmart, we bought fifty thousand dollars of protection, we've had forty-four thousand dollars in claims that have gone north of that protection. Okay? And just to give you an idea, last year, so again, this is only looking at six months, last year, in number of claims when the plan year ended, so this would have been from July of thirteen through June thirty of fourteen, we had four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in stop loss reimbursements. So right now, we're running great. We have only had forty-four thousand in reimbursements, albeit six months to go. Last year, we finished at forty to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in reimbursements, which was significant. The good news was, in working with Courtney, is a lot of those significant claims have subsided. They're no longer individuals who are participating on the plan and no longer represent risk. The problem I had is you had a really, really bad year, and then you've had a really, really good year. You're kind of, Walmart's still hanging on to the bad year a little bit, even though some of that risk has subsided. And subsided, they're no longer on the plan. I think, I think a couple of them unfortunately have deceased, okay? So again, a couple of numbers for you to remember going forward, seven hundred and sixteen dollars per employee per month, and then so far year to date, we've had forty-four thousand dollars in claims above and beyond our fifty thousand dollars of stop loss. The, the remaining pages are just graphs of the numbers we just went through. So if you're a pictorial person, look at the graphs. If you're a financial or a numbers person, we just went through the, the financial side of it. So let's go to the actual medical renewal tab, okay? So in today's world, you offer your employees two health plans to pick from. We'll call it a Cadillac and a Chevy, or we'll call it Plan A and Plan B. The first plan is a seven hundred and fifty dollar deductible on the left-hand side, in which you guys have the vast majority of your people enrolled in today. You've got about a hundred and one employees. And that number fluctuates every month, but you have about a hundred and one employees on Plan A, and you have about thirty employees that are on Plan B, which is a fifteen hundred dollar deductible plan, okay? Don't let the next page scare you, because there's a ton of numbers on it. And I'm going to walk you through this page very slowly, and then I think the rest of the presentation will flow off of that. So let's fast forward to this year's renewal that you received from Walmart, okay? And again, up top, it's listed, you are self-funded with Walmart, and this is your July 2015 renewal from Walmart. And as we understand it today, these are now final rates, correct, Courtney?
Right.
Okay. So let's start in the very, very top, okay? Today, your administrator of the plan is Walmart. At the top left, your reinsurance protection is also with Walmart. So that's the fifty thousand dollar stop loss protection that we're talking about today. So Walmart's administering the plan, Walmart's brokering. So Walmart's administering the plan, Walmart's brokering the plan, because you have a direct relationship with them. Walmart is also reinsuring the plan inside of their own reinsurance side of things. Top left-hand side is your $750 deductible. Again, you have 101 employees participating on the $750 on the top left. You've got 30 employees on your $1,500 deductible, which is Plan B, for a total of 131. And again, these numbers up and down every single month. So the very first section, we broke this out in thirds. The very top portion of it, highlighted in yellow, is your fixed costs. The next section is your variable costs, which is your claims. And then the last section is going to be the kind of the total of the fixed and the variable cost. So let's just start with the current $750 deductible. So we've got column one, which is your $750 deductible plan. Column two is your $1,500 deductible plan. And then you have your blue column, which ultimately totals Plan A and Plan B together. So we paid last year $35.95 to Walmart for them to administer our medical claims. Okay? We also pay $1.73 for them to administer our pharmacy claims. And then we rent Walmart's network, which allows us to go to the doctors and the hospitals who participate in Walmart's network, in which we get a discount from, for $4, excuse me, $1.145. So what we pay Walmart to administer our plan in the blue column is $77,203. Okay? The next section is also a fixed section, and this is the specific stop loss. We talked about that you have a $50,000 stop loss. We paid last year Walmart $229.45 for that protection. Again, you guys are on the hook from 0 to 50,000. Any dollar north of 50,000 is being covered by Walmart. And you're paying $229.45 for that protection. Or, again, on the blue column, you pay $360,000 a year for that protection. Then you are also buying aggregate stop loss in the form of $8.39. What aggregate stop loss is, is remember, remember on our claims report where we said, we're utilizing Walmart and we're asking Walmart to guesstimate as close as possible to what our claims are. And so they come out with their factors or their expected claims. And we talked about it being a dollar. And remember, today, you're running about 90 cents to the dollar. Okay? You are also buying aggregate insurance. When the underwriter says that your claims are going to be a dollar, you're buying aggregate insurance collectively across your entire group at $1.25. And so, again, this is, we buy, we buy two forms of reinsurance. One's a $50,000 stop loss on any covered body. And then we buy aggregate insurance at $1.25. So when the underwriter says budget at a dollar, we're on the hook, though, as a self-funded entity for $1.25. Okay? And I think, Courtney, I don't know if this is something acknowledged to you, but this is always a source of, well, where are we budgeting then as a county? If the underwriter says, well, we expect your claims to be a dollar, but what happens if we have $1.15? Or we have $1.17? Do we have the money? Do we have a reserve fund established? What are we basing employee contributions off of and those types of things? So some of our customers are budgeting at a dollar, and if we end up having $1.25, it's scramble mode, right? We don't have the money. We don't have the budget prepared for that. So I think that's something I would challenge you guys with, is where are you budgeting? And what kind of reserve fund do we have? You know, if we run it 90 cents to the dollar, it's great, you know? But what happens if we run it $1.10 to the dollar? Okay? But you pay $8.39 per employee per month to have the $1.25 protection, if that makes sense. So your total annual fixed costs, again, the 77, in the blue column, the $77,000 that you pay Walmart for administering the plan, the $360,000 that you pay Walmart for the $50,000 stop loss, and then the $13,000 that you pay Walmart for the, call it the $1.25, you are paying Walmart $451,000. Okay? That is your fixed cost period in the story. If you don't have a claim, you pay $451,000 in insurance period. Okay? But you're self-funded, so now we pay the claims. All right? If you take a look in the next section down, these are your variable costs. These are the month-to-month, the week-to-week, what your claims actually are. And if you look at the annual expected claims, Walmart expected your group in the third, in the blue column again, under the annual expected claims line, to have the $1,250,000 in claims. Right? That's what they expected. So that is their dollar. And if you took that $1,250 times 1.25%, you would get to the $1,563,000 below it. So when Walmart says, we expect you to have the $1,125, understand, that's what they expect. You guys are still on the hook for the $1,563 if we had a really difficult, tough, tough claim here. Okay? If you look at the actual column, this is where you guys are at today. Okay? And so this is where the 716 shows up. Remember, I said Walmart expects you to have the $1,250,000, but today, you're running about 10% to 11% below that. So six months into the year, if the next six months is reflective of the first six months, you're going to come in at $1,126,000 because you're averaging $716.47 per employee per month. Okay? I'll allow the advantages of being self-funded. If you're budgeting for a dollar and you come at 90 cents, who keeps the money in the county desk, the insurance company? Okay? So like, one first number I ask you to remember off of our claim report is that you're running at $716. That is simply saying, if the next six months, we just, we annualize the first six months of the plan, you will come in at the $1,126,000. Okay? So then sticking with that blue column again, let's just go back up top, because this will all make sense then. We know the total annual fixed costs in the blue column is $451,000. Right? Okay? If the underwriter is right, and you come in with the $1,250,000 in total claims paid, you take the $451 plus the $1,250, and you get to the bottom where it says your expected cost is $1,688,000. Right? But the maximum cost is the $2,100,000. Again, you're running at 90 cents to the dollar today, but that's how the spreadsheet works. So if you understand what we just went through there, the rest of this is going to be a piece of cake. Okay? Far right-hand side, here comes the renewal from Walmart. Yep?
Just checking my understanding, on these bottom two figures, the 1.6 and the 2 million,
Yep.
the difference of that, a little less than 400,000. That's what we should absolutely, as a minimum, have in our pool at risk? I mean, we should have more, but that would...
Yeah, I mean, our...
Is that correct or not?
We would always, we would always recommend that you have a minimum of three months of run-out liability. And if you average around $100,000 in claims a month, my question is, is... So yeah...
Well, maybe I shouldn't say it that way. I'm going to ask it differently. The difference between those figures is what we could end up paying out of our pool.
You're right.
Okay.
That's exactly right.
I forgot the first question. That was badly worded.
The first, the first one, the 1.6 million is taking the $451 plus the $1,250.
Right.
The $2,1000 is taking the $451,000 plus what your maximum liability, the $1.25. And that's my, that was always my question for my customers, is where do we budget?
The difference there is our risk to our pool.
Yeah. I had a customer one time, guys, they always budgeted the dollar. And why? Because they always ran at 90 cents, or 85 cents, or 93 cents. They always ran below the dollar. And then all of a sudden, bang, they had a terrible year, significant number of large claimants, and they ran at $1.25, and it was panic mode. And so, well, we don't, we were budgeting for a dollar, we came in 25%, which is a big number if you're not funded appropriately. So I don't know the questions, and we can get into that at any point in time. But those are always questions that I have. And when you're self-funded, today, you're running at 90 cents to the dollar. Good year, way to be self-funded. Problem is, whatever we run at $1.10, are we financed for it appropriately? Or are we starting to lay off people and cutting money and robbing money from this budget to that budget? You just want to make sure that you know what your maximum liability is, and that's the $1.25.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's very important. And since we have a relatively small pool of 131 people, it gets a little more radical than it would if you had 1,131 people.
Yeah. You're certainly on the small end of...
Yeah, averages can change quickly with a few people.
Yeah, you're certainly on the small end of self-funded employers because of the roller coaster aspect. And Courtney, I see that when they pull claims every week, there's, there's weeks where claims are whoop. And then there's weeks where it's crickets and just not. And even, we're just looking at it on an aggregated monthly basis on your behalf. Okay? So let's go to the right-hand side, and this is the actual renewal. So Walmart today, again, they're, they're charging you 35, on the left-hand side, top left, they're charging you $35.95 to administer the medical plan. You'll see they're bumping that to $36.81. They're actually lowering what they're charging you to administer the pharmacy plan from $1.73 to $1.65. And then they're increasing what they charge you to rent their network to $12.02. So collectively, your fixed costs from Walmart are going up to $79,354. So about a $2,000 increase from Walmart to continue to administer the plan. Okay? The issue that I have, though, is in the next section, and this is in the specific stop loss. All right? So this is your $50,000 of protection. Today, you pay Walmart $229 for that protection. And Walmart is increasing that substantially, actually 18% to $272.18. So my question is, is if you look at that total line, today, we pay Walmart $360,000 for that protection. Right? And they want to bump that protection to $427,000. Where are we at six months into the year? What have we had for reimbursements above? We've had $44,000. Right? Remember, we just went through your large claimants. You had six large claimants. And collectively, again, I know, I understand we're only six months into the plan year. But right now, we've only had 44, Walmart's only, Walmart's collected $360,000. Or they will at the end of the year. They will have collected 360. And what has Walmart paid out in reimbursements? $44,000. Well, what number does that have to get up to where Walmart is saying, well, we really think that that 360 number should go to 427. Okay? Albeit, they're looking at your prior year when your reimbursements were $450,000.
True.
So you're still probably in the midst of, Walmart's looking at a two-year average. One year was a really difficult year. This year, so far, knock on wood, we're $44,000. Even if that number finishes at $100,000, a very profitable year to Walmart, right? They're getting $360,000 for the protection and paid out whatever they end up paying out. So I struggle with Walmart taking that up 18% from 360 to 427. Okay? Then the next section is what you pay to have the $1.25 in reinsurance protection. Walmart's holding that at $8.39. And so your total fixed cost from Walmart is going up from the $451 that we talked about today to the $250, or excuse me, $520,410. So it's going up about $70,000, everything considered. You're not making any changes to anything. Walmart's going to administer the plan. They're going to continue to be your broker and consultant. And they're going to continue to provide you with the reinsurance protection. Follow me. Everyone's got on board with that? Okay? Then the next question is, is what's the underwriter expecting claims? All right? And let's go down to the annual expected claims. They expect you to have claims of $1,323,000 in claims next year. And that's actually about a 5.8% increase from what they expected. Last year, they expected you to have $1,250. They expect this year, your claims would go up about 5.8% to the $1,323. Okay? So they're using a couple of things in reflecting that. They're using trend. Now, again, you're running lower than that, though. So the problem is, is while the underwriter expects us to run at a dollar, well, here's your new dollar. Your new dollar is $1,323,000. Hopefully, you continue to run at 90% of that number, or 80% or whatever that number might be. The problem I have with them increasing that to 1.3 million is that 1.3 million then dictates where the $1.25 goes. Right? So part of our job is not only to keep their fixed costs down, but let's keep their dollar down. Because we buy reinsurance on the $1.25. So we don't want them just arbitrary. I mean, a lot of people call it a pie in the sky number. That's 1.3 million. Okay? But we set our reinsurance off of the 1.3 million. And that's, you know, if they would have kept it at 1.2 million, isn't that less liability to the county? Okay? So part of negotiation, too, is, is, hey, we're on pace for coming in at 1.1 million. Why are we raising it to 1.3? Again, we hope it doesn't end in 1.3, but again, establishes where your 1.25 reinsurance protection comes into play. Okay? So that is kind of the renewal. Hopefully, I mean, you guys get it, these numbers, Courtney tells me, are all now final. Okay? So I'll, now we know what we're up against, and we went out and we took it out to bid, and we've got two recommendations for you. Okay? Well, any questions with respect to what Walmart's current costs are, where you're running currently versus the renewal? Okay? Or have I lost everybody? No?
Nope.
Everyone's following me? Perfect. Perfect. Okay. So let's go to the next section, which is the options. And we went out to multiple carriers and multiple markets on your behalf. I'm going to show you two of them. That's the two, all the proposals are in here, but we're going to, with respect to time, we're just going to go through the two that make the most sense and the recommendations that I have. So in today's world, Walmart administers the plan, Walmart brokers the plan, Walmart provides the reinsurance. Okay? Walmart is in a position in today's reinsurance world where they do allow outside reinsurance opportunities to come to the table. Years and years ago, Walmart didn't. Okay? One of the questions I had for Courtney is, is, hey, if we stay with Walmart, and Walmart is our direct representation and Walmart administers the plan, when's the last time Walmart brought you in a reinsurance quote from somebody other than Walmart? And I don't think it's something that has happened very often. So what we did, if you look at the administrator and the reinsurance side of things, leaving this thing with Walmart, we just simply said, hey, I don't like what Walmart did on your reinsurance. They took that, what'd they take your $50,000 stop loss from? From 229 to 272? They hit that as a significant increase. I went out and said, forget it. Your people don't recognize who pays that claim above $50,000. They don't know, they don't care. It's not on their ID cards. We're just simply saying Walmart today provides protection at $50,000. We went out to bid on that reinsurance protection. The best carrier, the most affordable carrier that we went out to is a company called HM Life. It stands for Highmark Life Insurance. It is a Blue Cross Blue Shield-owned entity. Okay? So Walmart has reinsurance with HM Life today. They have it with other carriers as well. They're just not necessarily bringing those other carriers to the table on your behalf. So this is the easiest move for you guys in America, because your people don't care who covers Brent's claims at 50,000 and above. At some point in time, if somebody has claims over $50,000, the plan quits paying, and somebody else steps in and pays the rest. Right now, Walmart steps in and pays the rest. If you move to HM Life, this is just purely who's covering your claims above and beyond $50,000. Completely unidentifiable to your people. They wouldn't know that. It's not shown up on their ID card. And so there is no changes to your people. Your people still have Plan A and Plan B with Walmart. Walmart still administers the plan. The ID card's still Walmart. The network is still Walmart. This is just who on the behind the scenes is covering your reinsurance. So at the very, very top section, this compares Walmart's renewal, their 2015 renewal, to what you could get with Walmart and Highmark or HM Life together. Okay? So Walmart is still the administrator of the plan. So up top, today, the renewal's going up to $79,000. It's still going to $79,000 because we're keeping Walmart as our administrator of the plan. Okay? The next section, though, says, well, what are we paying for the $50,000 in stop loss? Remember, Walmart wants to take that to 272. You could move this to HM Life for 243.98. And then Walmart charges you $8.39 for aggregate insurance, the $1.25. HM said that they would do it for 923. So all in, we know that Walmart's fixed costs, what you pay Walmart to administer the plan plus what you pay for their reinsurance, is, in the blue there, is the $520,410. We can move this to HM Life overnight. We fill out an application for $477,400. Okay? So there is approximately $43,000 in savings just by moving the reinsurance. I promise you, your people don't know who the reinsurance is today. Okay? And it would be completely ghostly to them. They wouldn't know. This is just on the back end, who's providing you with $50,000 stop loss and who's providing you if you ever had anything north of a $1.25. So remember, Walmart, the biggest point that, what I think Walmart's doing is, again, you were at 229 for that stop loss, and they're taking it to the 272. It's not because of what happened here this year. This year, we've had a great year. We've only had $44,000 in claims. It's really because of what we had last year. And, you know, we started asking Courtney, well, what's the prognosis of those people? Well, the prognosis is, is they're not even on the plan. So is Walmart recouping what they lost from the prior year? Absolutely. Is there an opportunity to leverage and negotiate that? Absolutely. Because we can move to HM tomorrow at 243. And the question is, is can we get Walmart to come off of the 272 in lieu of this? Right? Because we know, we know, we can fill out an application, and we can move to HM, and there's $43,000 guaranteed, six savings. We're not moving insurance companies. We're staying with Walmart. And your people are still rolling forward like they are every other year. We're just changing the underlying reinsurance value at $43,000. Question is, is what can we, along with, what can Holmes Murphy, along with your team, we show Walmart, hey, you're at 272, we can move to HM for 243, 244. How much can we get Walmart down? And that's something that I'm happy to help leverage and negotiate on your behalf. But if Walmart puts their heels in the ground and says, no, we're going to leave it at 272, we can move this tomorrow to HM, start fresh with them for the 244. So there's about $43,000 in total fixed savings just to move the reinsurance. Any questions on that? Yeah?
If that's the case, why are the premiums going up?
Yeah. So they, so they also, this was kind of interesting, too.
I guess I'm, wait, maybe I'm wrong. I'm looking the wrong ways.
Yeah. So let's get down to the annual expected claims line, then. So this is what's interesting. You've got two entirely different underwriters looking at it. You've got Walmart's underwriters looking at it. And remember, under the annual expected claims line, in the blue column, they expected you to have $1,323,000 in claims this next year. Interestingly enough, HM Life took their own completely and totally independent look at that. And on the right-hand side, under HM Life, they expected you to have the $1,329,586. So it's interesting, I was kind of questioning, well, Walmart's really increasing that to 1.3. HM Life felt the exact same way. And that, I mean, they're within $4,000 of what they expected your claims to be. So it gave me a little bit of comfort in Walmart not just throwing out a new dollar as a new dollar, as a new dollar, but they actually underwrote it to the 1,300, or, yeah, the 1,300,000, and HM was right, right there. And again, HM doesn't have the advantage of seeing what Walmart's numbers are. We don't share with them where Walmart was at in any of this. So it's amazing when you're talking about 1.3 million in claims, two independent underwriters took a look at it, and they came within $4,000 of each other. I mean, not to me, or, excuse me, within $6,000 of each other. So again, the HM Life proposal does pass on just slightly additional liability because now that number is the $1.25. If we move to HM Life, we would go back to Walmart, because Walmart provides us on the bottom left-hand side with what they use as accrual rates. We would go back to Walmart and say, hey, give us new accrual rates, but use HM Life as the reinsurer because we're saving $43,000 to move to them. So that is my first recommendation. If we don't do anything, we move this to HM Life, assuming we can't get Walmart off the 7, excuse me, the 270. A lot of numbers coming out here. Assuming we can't get Walmart off of the 272. And again, I was just looking at the first six months going, how in the world are they trying to raise that stop loss to 272? Well, again, it wasn't because of the first six months that I seen it, it was what happened.
Previous, yeah.
Yeah.
Don't they go off of three years?
They go off of usually two years.
Two years.
Yep. So you're hanging on to a really, really, and my argument to Walmart would be, hey, Walmart, do you want to come off the 272? Because if Walmart puts their heels in the ground and we do move to HM Life, okay? Walmart just did what? They sealed their fate. They lost, they lost business. And they lost, they didn't, they lost their ability to recoup those costs. Versus if they make a nice, fair gesture and come off of the 272, then there's an opportunity to maintain on your books, and hopefully, we continue to have years where we run like we're running so far this year.
So once again, Brent, Gene brought up a good point. How is this going to impact our rates to the, you know, to the employee, the total, you know, rates by the four?
Yeah. We would have to go, we would have to go to Walmart and ask them to give us their accrual rates off of the HM proposal. So Walmart would have to give that to us.
Okay. But there would still be a savings based on that $43,000.
For sure. That is a guarantee. I mean, that's the only savings we can absolutely guarantee anybody is, is when you're self-funded, is what's your fixed savings. You know, and then we hope we continue to have years where we run at 90% of expected and whatnot. Right? I mean, do you guys have a history going back even future, or previous years? Do you have a history for if you've usually run better or worse than the underwriter's expectations? Do you know?
I've only dealt with it for two years.
For a couple of years now.
Yeah.
I know of one year within the last six that we ran beyond.
Yeah.
I know of one, but there may be more, but I know of one for sure that we ran beyond.
Yeah. So those are the questions we're always having is, well, we understand what the carrier's dollar is. Where are we budgeting? And again, part of our job with our customers is every single month, I should be able to run into you guys anywhere in the street in Carroll and say, hey, things are going good. Yeah, you're right, we're running at 93% of expected. You guys knew that. You follow that? You know, or we're sitting and we would ask Courtney, hey, Courtney, can we get to the supervisor meeting at some point in time? We need 15 minutes just to let them know we're running at $1.17, so that when we budget and we prepare for future allocations, that we're budgeting appropriately. And so if you're running at 90 cents, it's easy. You're running at $1.20?
Okay. But Brett, let me just, I want to clarify for the board that once, once we would go back to Walmart and get those accrual rates.
Yeah.
Okay? Then would those rates reflect an actual $43,000 savings by the time we got back?
Yes.
And compared them to these?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
So collectively, between all those tiers, it would be $43,000.
So if we're paying out 1.6 million worth of premiums right now.
Yep.
That'll be less $43,000.
Yes. And Walmart would establish those accrual rates on your behalf. Because we're still, we're still relying on Walmart to administer the plan and provide us with those numbers. We're just no longer using Walmart to be the reinsurance protection.
Right.
I think we would have success in getting Walmart off of the 272.
Okay.
Will we have success getting them down to 244? I don't know, but that's entirely up to you. The 244 is on the table. The reinsurance market does want to take a look at this through the month of April. Okay? So they do want to see claims, lock it in through the month of April, and then they could lock in those figures. Walmart's locked in already today, but they've got 20 years of history that they're going off of. These guys were looking at two years of claims experience. So they do want to see what's happened in January, February, and March, and April, and then they would lock that number in. Very, very unlikely for the 244 to, 243 to change unless we just had significant changes from what they looked at when we originally presented it to them.
Okay. Thank you.
What would be the op, the possibility of getting lower this administration fee that they're going up on?
We do have some proposals in there where some administration fees are actually lower than this. So then you could, like, United Healthcare's administration fees are significantly lower than this. They're doing it like, I want to say like 55,000 instead of 79,000. So again, is that an opportunity for us to, I'm trying to see where the United Healthcare proposal is, is that an opportunity for us to attack any of the fixed costs that United Healthcare, or that Walmart has on the table? You know, United Healthcare was in at 53,000 to administer the plan, and Walmart's in at 79,000. So anything that's a fixed cost, we'd love to go after those guys and try to help them. Because that's the only thing you can control on the back end of it, is the claims experience.
But Gene, you got to remember, even during the broker proposals, I think, in fact, I think it was Brent that said, a lot of companies do their admin for far less than Walmart, but because Walmart has the deep discounts, they know they can get by with.
That is true.
See?
Yeah. And that's the problem with you do believe from Walmart is, is Walmart's discounts greater than any other carrier that's in the marketplace? And that's going to be the biggest problem. We can look at fixed costs all day. The fixed costs only represent the front end of what your spend is. And that's why this is an attractive option, because this is stacking the fixed costs, and we're still getting Walmart and their network and their discounts and everything else. I mean, I think the HM proposal is a no-brainer, assuming we can't get Walmart's 272 down. We get Walmart's 272 down, then it's, you just stay with Walmart, and we just use the market to leverage the Blues.
And with that being said, that way, things are seamless. I mean, the employees have no idea what is even changing.
And your employees wouldn't know in either one of these, whether the reinsurance is with Walmart or the reinsurance is with HM, your people wouldn't have a clue. So now it's just, these are two fixed costs. Let's just go and see who will do it for life.
Courtney's office does have to manage two EOBs.
So they write two checks. Two bills. Yeah, two bills. Two bills. So they would get a bill from Walmart for the 79,000.
So they'd make a little more work.
Right? They'd get a bill from Walmart for the 79,000, and they would get a bill from HM for the remaining almost 400,000. But the cool thing is, is HM is set up electronically with Walmart. So when somebody does go over, say you had a $60,000 claim, and you guys are on it from 0 to 50, and then HM's going to step in and pay the remaining 10, that claim is fed electronically from Walmart to HM. HM pays it, reimburses the county, and it's done. And it's not a, we have to mail in the claim because we have an outside reinsurance.
Yeah.
Walmart has like four direct relationships that they have reinsurance proposals with. And again, Mike, I'm not going to beat up Walmart. 70% of my business is Walmart. But my question is, when's the last time Walmart brought an outside reinsurance proposal to the table?
Not my tenure.
Right. So they just went from 229 to 272 and didn't even challenge it. They should've gone out to the market and said, hey, is there another, is there an appetite for one of our other preferred vendors who could reinsure this on the county's behalf? And that's what we did for you, was first and foremost, we recognized moving it away from Walmart's going to be tough. We've been with them forever. They seem to do a good job. They've got great discounts. Leaving Walmart is going to disrupt all 131 of your people, plus spouses, independent children. So by first and foremost, I thought, well, let's beat up the $79,000 in fixed costs or the $400,000 in reinsurance costs.
And just to interject here, that, you know, two years ago, specifically you and I, we went back to Amanda at that time and said, can you bring us other proposals? We're looking at anything to help reduce our costs here. And she brought us some HMO plans. She gave us some higher deductible plans. We gave her every opportunity to provide an option such as this, and we did not receive it. So forget that.
So this is, I mean, assuming these numbers are locked in, and we got to get some updated claims reports, but we can start leveraging this right now. We'd love to get on the phone in conjunction with you and Walmart and say, hey, we did some work. We've got, we got a good proposal on the table from HM Life. Is there an opportunity for you to revisit your specific stop loss premium? Do you need to go? Again, they were going from 360 to 427. You need to go there because we've got someone else who will do it for the 383 in the second section, 383,000. At 243, 98. Right?
Ready to look at option two?
Yeah. So option, so that's the easiest thing, guys, is we either negotiate Walmart to come off of their stop loss, or if they don't, we move HM, $43,000 in savings to the county. Okay? The next section is obviously going to be disruptive. We went out to United Healthcare Coventry as well as Health Partners. The proposal that is financially the most advantageous is moving everything, the whole ball and wax to Health Partners. Okay? So in today's world, you're with Walmart and Walmart's reinsurance and Walmart's network. Health Partners is now the administrator. Health Partners is the reinsurance entity, and you're using their network, which is known as Midland's Choice. Some of you may have heard their network in the past. In Iowa, Nebraska, they use the Midland's Choice network. And outside of Iowa, they use Cigna as a national network. Okay? So therein lies my first question. What is Midland's Choice's discounts at St. Anthony Hospital in comparison to Walmart's network, which is the line selects discounts? Okay? Out of the gates, let's just start with the blue column again. Walmart is going to charge you 79,354 in fixed costs. That's the renewal rate. Health Partners is actually higher. They will do it for 114,535. Okay? But they will provide you with the $50,000 stop loss protection at $180. So they're literally $90, roughly $90 lower per employee per month on the back end to provide you with the $50,000 of stop loss protection. So again, Walmart, if you look at that second section, the stop loss premium, Walmart wanted to take it from 360 to the 427,000. If you're following me there, HM will do it for 283,000. Albeit, their administrative fees are higher, but their total stop loss fees are lower. And then their aggregate insurance, which is the third section down, again, Walmart today is at $8.39. They're a little higher here as well at the $10.53. But all in, up on the far right-hand side, their administrative fee of 114,000 plus their reinsurance at 283, plus the $16,000 for attachment point, or the $1.25 insurance, we'll call it, their total fixed costs are 414,000 period end of story. And that is $106,000 less than the $520,000 that's on the table today from the Blues. But this is changing your world. I mean, this is now, your people are carrying a Health Partners card. Health Partners is administering the plan. They're using the Midland's Choice network, and then their discounts come into play. Okay? My biggest concern, and we had a little bit of a conversation around this, is what we would traditionally do in this is if we were the broker, is we would go back to Walmart. Walmart will come in here, I promise you, Walmart will come in here as the 100-pound gorilla and say, yeah, but our discounts aren't greater in this area. And I believe them. Okay? How much greater needs to be proven? Okay? Because let's just say that you guys have a million, let's use round numbers because it's easier for me. Let's just say that you have $1 million in claims. Okay? And Walmart says, yeah, we get a 40% discount on average in those claims, whether it's McFarlane Clinic, or the Apothecary, or Ivy, or St. Anthony's Hospital, or wherever your people are going. Let's just pretend that Walmart averages a 40% discount on claims. And let's just pretend that we move to Midland's Choice, or to Health Partners, and they use the Midland's Choice network. And let's just say that you have $1 million in claims, but they only average a 35% discount. So there's a 5% greater discount with Walmart than there is with Health Partners? Well, 5% on $1 million in claims is 50,000 bucks on the back end of your self-funded analysis. So we can talk about the fixed cost being $106,000 less until we're blue in the face, unless we can do some validation with respect to, is the Midland's Choice discounts 5% less? What if it's only two? Right? So how we would normally do this is if we were the broker, and I don't know that Walmart would give me this information, we would go back to Walmart and we would say, Walmart, give us the top 100 ICD-9 code claims that your people have. These are, these are the top 100 reasons why your people go to the doctor or pick up a prescription drug. And then we would say, and who are the top five people or providers that we go to? I would assume it's McFarlane, it's going to be St. Anthony's, and then it's going to be a crapshoot between who the other three or so. But we would say, who's your top 100 claims, and who are the top five people that they're going to? And we would go and do a discount analysis with respect to those entities. And then we would go to Midland's Choice and Health Partners and give them the same data feed and say, here's their top 100 clothes, or claims, and here's the top five people that they're seeking it from, and what is your discount? Is it really 5% gap? What if it's seven? What if it's two? You know, all I know is there's $106,000 in savings to move to Health Partners. What I don't know is, are we making a colossal error on the back end because the discounts are that much better with Walmart? Right? So that's how we would traditionally do it. I would tell you that my guesstimate in this area is that Walmart is getting approximately, and it's a guesstimate, 5% greater discount in this area than what any other carrier is getting. So again, we're saving $106,000. That's a guarantee. And here's $106,000 right back to you guys. Now let's roll the dice on the back end of the discounts. If we're giving up five points every time someone goes to the doctor, are we going to just pay the back end of any claims? And that's what Walmart will tend to make you believe. Walmart will say, you're not leaving us. The reason we can get away with charging more in fixed costs is because we'll make it up on the back end. It's our job to prove that. If we had the data, if we, you know, if we could go back to Walmart and get it and mine that information. I would go back, though, to Walmart and ask them, what is our average discount? I assume most, who else would they be going to besides McFarlane, St. Anthony? Every once in a while, they go west to Omaha, or east to the one.
Manning, Manning a little bit.
Manning, Manning a little bit, yeah.
St. Anthony's the biggest.
Perhaps Lake City a little.
Yeah. Because you could go back to Wellmark right now and ask them, what is our average discount as a percentage that we're getting today? And they should be able to give that to you. I could potentially go back to Midland's Choice and Health Partners and say, hey, I just wanna, I just wanna keep this in Carroll County, I wanna get an idea, what's your average Midland's Choice discount at these local providers? And let's just see.
Didn't that one report show that?
It showed the providers, so it didn't show the discounts.
Yeah, but who the providers were.
Yeah, that's why I said, St. Anthony's, like, 400-some thousand dollars is those claims.
If you're fully insured, guys, if you're fully insured, it doesn't matter, you're just paying a fixed premium, it doesn't matter. If you're self-funded, oh, no, no, the discounts matter. They matter to your people, and they matter to you. 5% on, like I say, it's 7, it would be more than 7 probably, but you know, we've just given up all of our, what we think is $106,000 in fixed savings out of the front. Plus, we disrupted and we moved to a new carrier and whatnot.
So you don't think it'd be any greater than that?
I don't think it would be greater than that. It could perhaps be less than. I mean, it could be within 1% or 2%, and you're thinking, yeah, done, we'll move. Because we know there's $106,000 in savings on the table, and it's almost we can bring a validation to the claims, that they're gonna be within a couple of percentage points of what Walmart's discounts are.
Brent, forgive me, Victor, you might be headed there, but can you refresh the board a little bit what you told Courtney and I on Friday, that they're gonna, about the two-year rate guarantee?
Oh, yeah, that is footnoted.
Should we run into these expected claims?
Yeah. That is footnoted and read at the very, very bottom, guys, that Health Partners is extended. So let's go, let's go back up to the very, very top. The $114,000 that Health Partners says they wanna charge you to administer the plan, top right, 114,000, that is under a two-year rate guarantee. So the $72.86 that they are charging you is gonna be 72.86 again next year. Okay? They are guaranteeing that the add, or that the stop-loss cost, the $180.10 will be no more than a 9% increase, and it will, at the very, very bottom, it will go to 196.31 next year, period, end of story. Whether you have a good year, they're going to 196, or you have the most awful year in America, they're going to 196. Again, Walmart's at 272. Right? So they are guaranteeing in the fixed side of things, so basically, look you in the eyes and say, we're not buying your business, and we're willing to go out in two years and prove it to you. They will hold their administrative fee for two years with a guaranteed stop-loss increase of 9%.
So the 9% is going no matter what?
Is going no matter what. So it's almost like saying, Mark C., in two years, we don't have to worry about the renewal, you can budget for it. It's coming.
Yeah.
Good, bad, or ugly. It's gonna go from 180 to 196.
How are these Health Partners to work with, like Mayo and that?
Yeah, Health Partners, so Health Partners, just to give you an idea, these guys are headquartered out in Minneapolis, Minnesota. They don't, I'll be honest, they don't have a ton of business in Iowa yet, which is why they don't have their own network. In Minnesota, they have their own network, it's Health Partners. In Iowa, they're still renting a network, they're renting Midland's Choice, because they haven't gotten enough business to come in and leverage and negotiate with the providers and the carriers and whatnot. They are a significant player up there, though. They write Target, they write 3M, they write General Mills. Okay, so, but they're not, they're not just a fly-by-night HMO type of entity. I mean, Target Corporation has about 50,000 lives, they're with Health Partners. Okay? So they are a legitimately-run health insurance entity. They're a self-funded carrier, they don't do any fully insured business like Walmart does. So they're legitimate, and they even said, man, we would love, anybody that wants to come up to their, guys, this is an incredibly impressive facility, to where everything is done right there. Their pharmacy is there, their case management is there, their claims payment's right there, their billing is right there, it is all in one entity in Minneapolis. And they, when they bring people in, it is the greatest dog and pony show in America. I mean, us brokers give, we get opportunities to see the insides of all of these insurance companies, it's as impressive as it is. I mean, they are, so from a service and from a backend support, we've got zero issues with Health Partners.
Brett said they're not currently insuring that they're aware of any municipalities yet at this time, but they could be moving into that arena quite well, and as he mentioned, a lot of corporate customers already, and they're A-rated.
They are. Mark, I would, I would guesstimate they have less than five customers in Iowa. So I mean, the downside of, well, today, you're with Blue Cross, who hasn't heard of them, right? Everybody hears Blues, they see their advertising, they see their marketing, everybody knows Walmart, right? And so, yeah, you're going to the complete opposite end of the spectrum with respect to Health Partners, who's Health Partners? I mean, some of us have heard of Midland's Choice, and that's the network that they're using, but yeah, I mean, to roll this out to your people, they're gonna be like, whoa, who are these guys? And I get that, but they were by far the most competitive, I mean, their stop-loss cost is at 180 bucks. Walmart's at 172. So they were by far the most opportunity for fixed savings. We just don't know on the backend from the claims. I would go to Walmart, here's what I'll do, I'll go back to Midland's Choice and ask them if they can give us a discount analysis. It's not gonna be tied to Carroll County, I just wanna know if they can give us a discount analysis in Carroll County. And you guys can go back and ask Walmart for the same information. Walmart's gonna be related to you, because they're gonna have your claims, they're gonna say, well, Carroll County is getting X. And Midland's Choice would say, yeah, but we're getting Y, and it's not necessarily specific to Carroll County. But I think that's worth finding out, is it a 5% gap, or is it a 1% gap? The other proposals behind there are United Healthcare and Coventry Healthcare, or, I mean, they're all set up the exact same way as this, so if you get this, you'll be able to look at the rest of the proposals. None of those other entities were as competitive as Health Partners.
But they were all less expensive than Walmart?
Correct. Correct. So I started the meeting today with, I said, I'm gonna recommend two things. The easiest thing to do is to stay with Walmart, and I get that, okay? But we need to go challenge that reinsurance cost by throwing that HM life proposal at them. Absolutely, if we stay with Walmart, we need to bring HM life to the table, or use that proposal to bring Walmart's number down. The flip side of that is, is the whole disruption idea of, we move away from Walmart altogether, and we get with Health Partners.
I guess I look at it at this point, $43,000 is significant for me, and it's seamless enough to go to the employees. If we go to the $106,000 savings, we don't know what those discounts are on the backend, and that is a big concern to me.
Yeah.
Because Courtney is the one that has to deal with these employees when an insurance claim comes in. And she's gonna have to deal with it, will have to deal with it, and I don't want that.
And like I said, after the discounts, it might not even be, after the discounts, it might, if there was a 5% gap, also, after the discounts, it's only 50,000 in savings, and you could've just done that with HM. Right? So that, I mean, to be honest with you...
If we would do the comparison on the discounts and find that Health Partners is actually a better situation, would that be a good negotiation tool with our current carrier?
Well, yeah, Walmart needs to know that there's a carrier that wants to do this at 180 bucks. They're on a need-to-do basis.
I think, I think the difference is, on the 43,000, you know, it's, if they don't wanna match it, it's a pretty easy switch. On the comparison with Health Partners, I think if we find out that the discounts are very similar, or not far apart anyhow, and we use it as a negotiation tool, we have to be in a situation where we can honestly say, we are gonna switch if you don't do it. I don't think you're gonna bluff or play that game with anybody.
Or we buy ourselves some time to take a real, real serious look at this next year again. You know, I mean, we take, we take the HM life savings.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Right? And then over the next so many months, we really try to bring validation to the discounts, so that if we decide to make a move, one, we're giving ourselves more time to do it, two, we can get out in front of employees and explain, not that they're world-shamed, we're talking, they would duplicate Plan A and Plan B, so their benefits aren't changing, it's just who's paying the claims and the EOBs and everything else. But, I mean, buy yourself some more time to validate the discounts.
What would be the situation if we did do the change to Health Partners, and employee went into St. Anthony's Hospital and had whatever done, and says, well, let's see your insurance card, last night, Blue Cross Blue Shield, it's, Health Partners may scratch their head, is there an issue at that point?
There's not. No. No, they're, I mean, they are contracted with St. Anthony's, so St. Anthony's gonna submit that claim on those employees' behalf, it's gonna run through in accordance to the plan that that individual's on, and it'll be processed accordingly. Just maybe processed at a different discount.
I know they know how to run the claims for Blue Cross, do they?
Yes.
Can't these have as easy a time running these claims?
Yes, they do. Midland's Choice is the backend network for several carriers. So they, yeah, that, they would, and Midland's Choice, in comparison to Walmart, they have every hospital in the state of Iowa, they have a Mayo Clinic, they also have 99, I think, Wal-
98.
98. Walmart has 99.1% of all the doctors, they have 98, I think they said 98.4, but 98. So there's about a 1% provider gap. I don't know that that 1% of providers reside in here, but there could, I guess, be a very, very outside chance that the local chiropractor isn't in the Midland's Choice network, very unlikely. So very highly unlikely that employees' benefit design would change at all, and unlikely that they would have to change whom they're doctoring with, or all these years, whether it's a, you know, where they're picking up their prescription drugs, to where they're having babies, to where they're going to the chiropractor, their OB for that matter, unlikely that that would have to change too, going to Midland's Choice. Who's the backend of it? But it is, it's disruption, and we're gambling on 106 versus the 43 is, that's a check today. That's a check today, and I'm hoping that we can use that check to bring Walmart's 272 down. I just don't know that book gets to 244. And then it's up to you guys, what number do they have to get down to keep the business? That's never our call, that's always our customers' call. We draw, sometimes you draw a line in the sand and say, hey, Walmart, hey, you gotta get to 250, or we're moving to business. It's up to, you know, that's, that's for you guys to decide how much money is worth the disruption.
The only comment I'd make about, you know, making a change to Health Partners is, it's a given that there's $106,000 savings at least immediately, and then, you know, perhaps the discounts may lessen that to a certain degree, but as you just covered just a moment ago, we have very healthy reserves in that pool. And so if we're going to, you know, take a chance, and we talk about taking chances here at this table every day, you know, it would be a suitable and appropriate time to do that, because it was less than three years ago, we were at 700,000 on that reserve, we got it built back up to 1.2, because we haven't had these, you know, expected claims. It might behoove us to really consider that option today.
Yeah, you, I hear that right, you have 1.2 million in reserves sitting out there?
Yes.
Because again, our, we're always trying to get our customers to have is approximately three, sometimes four months' reserves available, which you get in Iowa, it's your average monthly. Yeah, I was right, just under $100,000 in claims a year, a month, excuse me.
So we've got 10 or 11 months.
Significant. Which is all the more reason just to, oh, we can just let Walmart take that thing from 229 to 272. I'm like, oh, don't wait for that. That was tough for me to swallow this year, until I looked at last year and I'm like, oh, they were way up, you were upside down last year, at $450,000 in reimbursements. This year, we're only at 44. And they bumped that, that was, that was an 18% hit from 220. That was the one thing that, out of everything, guys, if you're wondering, asking me my opinion, that was the one piece of this that I just racked my head with and thought, if there's anything we can do, let's get the 272 down, because that is a fixed cost.
I'm not looking at this in purely speculative, I mean, I want our employees to have good coverage. I don't want much to change for them, I want the disruption to be as little as possible. But we've, we haven't taken Wellmark to task for 23 years. And, you know, once again, let me just remind the board that this is an opportunity to take advantage of some savings. And how will we react?
And I'd ask Walmart, you know, I understand that you have outside reinsurance partners today that maybe weren't there in the past. How come we hadn't seen them? You know what I mean? Again, I don't, and I'm not painting a bad picture, guys, I write, I think I told you Friday afternoon, I said, guys, 70% of my block of business, and Holmes Murphy's block of business in general, is with Walmart. So for us to beat up the hand that feeds us, listen, Walmart does a wonderful job, okay? But they just need to be held accountable from time to time, and just make sure that they're not just loosely doing things because they can take advantage of their long-term relationship.
We gave them every chance two years ago, Gene, to give us a proposal such as this, and what we didn't know did was...
Two years ago, Mark, to Walmart's defense too, Walmart had a TPA that they ran called First Administrators, that has subsequently gone out of business, and so now, all that bit, when you were with a TPA, you truly shopped everything. You shopped the network, you shopped the reinsurance, you shopped every component of it, and Walmart was always more of a, nah, you're gonna buy our administration, you're gonna buy our, our reinsurance, and you're gonna buy ours. Okay? Now that Walmart has absorbed First Administrators, they have had to loosen that noose a little bit and allow people to go out and shop outside reinsurance, and now they've got three or four outside entities with whom they've got electronic capabilities with. They just, so maybe two years ago, when you asked them, is there other reinsurance opportunities? Maybe the answer was at that time, no.
We didn't ask them that, we just asked them, you know, so, and those opportunities were available, it's just they didn't bring them to the table.
Sure.
Two years ago, we brought in benefits, or student, there wasn't an advantage student at that point.
But he said that two years ago, they may not have had that.
Perhaps. But to wrap things up, I mean, the safest route is the HM proposal, because it is absolutely zero disruption to your people. Okay? But also, the safest thing is, is to go wave that and dangle that carrot in front of Walmart and see if we can get them to budge off of that. I'm absolutely happy to do that to the extent that Walmart will allow us. Otherwise, the HM proposal's in there, Courtney, right behind there. Scan that and email that over to them and say, hey, we'd like to schedule a conference call to talk about, there's an opportunity to brush up on the fixed costs. Because if they really did lose money last year, the last thing they wanna do is chase you away this year without an opportunity to recruit that. Right?
Well, as I said, doing nothing isn't an option. You know, we've got essentially one of three options, we either dangle the carrot back to Walmart, or we jump to HM, or we consider jumping to HP.
Correct.
Or we just blow, you know, if we do nothing, we just blow $4,000 on a great conversation.
You will, you will get Walmart down $4,000 bucks. Period. You will absolutely get, and then, then you're, then you're starting from a lower point of your proposal.
I wouldn't stay, I would switch if they only went down $4,000.
I would too.
You know, that's, that's, that's 43, there's no reason that we'd wanna give them $39,000.
No way.
Just, that's not gonna happen.
And it's seamless?
That's not gonna happen, from this perspective, anyway.
Yeah, I agree. So maybe draw the line at 244? Again, let me, let me just explain that, but HM does wanna see claims through April. And again, I don't know what has happened, maybe you have a better feel for January, February, March, and April, I don't, I don't know if anything significantly has changed. And they're looking at, running at 90% of expected with very few large claims at this point in time. If something were to change, then they wouldn't want to be, because they've got that in their school, and they're gonna see through April. But they'd like to be able, right?
How much can we wave our, wave that carrot at them with the HM and also the HP?
Yeah.
Just work them down, both?
Absolutely. Yeah, we're gonna use, assuming Walmart will let us leverage them, we'll use every bit of leveraging we have. It's a lot easier to stay right with Walmart, so let's get them down. And if we can, and they get, they get bullheaded, which they can do sometime, when you rack 70% of the market, it's easy to be bullheaded.
How much more research or time would it take to determine the difference on the discounts between HP and Walmart, so that we have a legitimate comparison?
A legitimate?
A more accurate comparison?
A legitimate comparison, or just a guesstimate? I think you could probably get the discount information from Walmart pretty quickly.
Yeah.
I would have to go back to Health Partners and, and Midlands and ask them if they can mine that data down to, like, the county, for example, and not just say, well, on average across the state of Iowa, we get this. I'm like, well, I don't care about the state of Iowa, if you're getting a significantly deeper discount in the metro, Des Moines metro area than you are in rural Iowa, I wanna, I wanna see if they can mine that to Carroll County.
Because I think Walmart, they have different discounts from rural, but...
Oh, for sure, they do. They absolutely do.
Right?
Yes. They're negotiating that on a provider, they're planning the two chiropractors in town something differently. Or however, yeah, however many chiropractors in town.
So I wanna ask them for their discounts in Carroll County, correct?
I would just ask them, yeah, see if they can give it to you with respect to Carroll County, because then it would be more apples to apples. If they can't, they're just gonna give it to you plan, plan general. I would assume significant portion, percentage of your claims are coming from Carroll County anyways, which is gonna capture many.
Yeah.
And nobody's getting a discount when they go up to Mayo anyways. I think, I think the Mayo discount's like five, for any carrier, whether you're with Midland's Choice or Walmart, United Healthcare. So you think about it, if someone goes in and have a $10,000 claim at St. Anthony's, and you're getting a 40% discount versus a $10,000 claim at Mayo Clinic, and you're getting five, puts significant pressure on the plan, or the self-funded entity. Not that we wanna, I mean, obviously, the outcomes and everything else of the Mayo Clinic looks at the table, but that's about what they're giving in form of discounts to anybody.
As far as timeframe, Courtney, when is the final date that we have to have this decided
There's no date on there, just ask for, yeah, there's a place to sign. They've never told me a date.
I seem to recall there was always a renewal date in May with Walmart.
And there's a place on here for signatures, so it doesn't...
Thirty days, maybe?
Probably a little sooner with the self-funded plan. I mean, because they have to create your SBCs and do all of that, so I would say even prior to that.
You would wanna make a decision, well, if you're moving carriers, if you're gonna move to Health Partners, you wanna probably roll.
Right.
If, if you're gonna ultimately stay with Walmart and beam up, and then we're gonna renew in that, in that capacity, I think you're gonna make a decision by the end of May.
For sure.
I don't think it would be prudent to roll to Health Partners unless we have a more definitive understanding of the differences in the discounts. Do you agree with that, Brent?
I do. I do. Because, because I think that that $106,000 is going to get chipped into to some degree, to what degree, we don't know yet. So that $106,000's gonna get chipped in, maybe by 2%, maybe by 5, and, you know, the closer that number is to 5, we're getting awfully, awfully close to have, we just take the HM offering, the HM life offering, and just move the reinsurance, right?
Is that still considering a healthy reserve? I mean, that recommendation, is that still considering that we still have a healthy reserve to call back on?
Yeah. I'm just, that's a, that's a nice reserve. That's not, that's not that uncommon, I'm meeting with a county tomorrow morning, it's a current customer of mine too, and they're, they're carrying around a significant reserve like that as well. It's a good reserve to have. I'd much rather have you be funded for bad years than be underfunded, and then you have to...
Oh, I wouldn't dream of doing this if we were down around 200,000 or 300,000, but I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I...
Considering it at 1.2.
Because it still has to, despite the reserves market, it still has to be a healthy decision. You know, and sure.
What you even made the recommendation, what we could do is even go ahead and, I think you said earlier, go this way and do the HM, and then look at next year if we get tight for time, right?
Correct.
I like that idea. And then we'll know more about discounts.
Or we could see what we can get done in time, but...
And one of the services that Brett offered in his buffet plan did just that, you know, so we could go back and re-contract him again next year to do that a la carte, should you wish. Correct?
Correct. Yeah, we, this was just a, let's bring the market, let's bring you some opportunity. I, I told Courtney Friday that if Walmart lets us, we'll help you finish and put a bow tie on all of this and hopefully save you $43,000.
I'm all for that, if we don't jump now.
And then at that point in time, we go away to the extent that you want to reengage us.
Consider the price is right.
Consider the price is right. All right.
I guess as a, I look at this, in the next two weeks, we need to make the decision and put some of these figures together. I mean, that's, that puts us at the middle of May. I don't want to get down to that crunch time and just pull the plug.
Well, I, I would say that we would approach Walmart and see if they'll match or come darn gone close to our HM at 43. And it's, it's gotta be real close. It really is because it's just that easy to switch.
Sure.
And maybe at the same.
I would dangle that HP, too.
And at the same time, tell them that we are, have a pretty darn good offer from Health Partners and see if they can help us there. Maybe they can help us on both counts. And if they, as far as the $50,000 reinsurance, I don't care what they do, I shouldn't say that. But I, I care what they do, but if they don't budge, we'll just switch it. But on this one, if, if they don't move a little bit, I think almost either way, we need to check out the discounts unless they really move.
Yeah.
You mean later on, end of the year?
Yes. Then we need to do more research and see what the discount difference is, so we can make a smart decision here.
Yeah, let me, let me just, maybe just move this ahead a little bit. It, it doesn't sound as though the board has much tolerance for the HP option.
Well, I do.
Not, not, not.
We do, we just gotta get more.
Down the road.
We just need information.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Down the road.
I have no objection to changing.
Now?
Or down the road.
Well, we, I would change as soon as we get a comparison on the discounts. I, I think it would be bad to change now and find out that there is a huge discounts difference and we didn't really gain very much or anything at all.
Yeah, and we, and we made our people switch.
Yeah.
You know?
I agree.
So do we at the very least take this back to Walmart?
Now.
Yeah, that's what you say.
At the very least, we take this to Walmart and say, we're looking at this.
I think, I think you do two things. One, you ask Walmart for your discounts. We'll go back and ask Midlands to see if they can mine it down at Carroll County for the discounts. Again, not specific to Carroll, but it'll just be their overall average that they get in the area. And then in the meantime, while we're waiting for them to give us the discounts, we go back to Walmart, we go back to them immediately. And we dangle the HM proposal, maybe even a little bit of the Health Partners proposal, and we try to attack everything.
And you're still good with that, provided they'll visit with you?
I'm, I'm not happy to help anyway.
And, and what does "we" mean? Does "we" mean we three or you or what does "we" mean?
Well, certainly means me and whoever else you guys want to have at the table, probably Rachel, because she, again, Rachel did all this work to a large degree. But it's definitely me. It's definitely me along with probably you and maybe me doing most of the talking, but whatever it might be. But they, they just need to know that you guys reached out and we have an agreement for us to do this and that you guy, if they need you to sign some piece of paper that says, this is Brent and this is why he's putting his nose in our business and it's because we are allowing him to do so.
How soon can we do that? Rachel?
Today. I mean, we would, I think you need to go back to Walmart with this right now. There's enough savings on the table that Walmart needs to get a pencil to this tomorrow.
Today's Monday, Brett. How about tomorrow? Is that all right?
We help anyway, we can.
Courtney?
Yes.
You've been silent, been eerily silent. What's your thoughts here?
I like the HM option until we know more about the discounts. And if we can find out about the discounts before our final rates have to be either approved and it's minimal, then it'd be silly not to sledge.
This year?
If you have the information. I don't know that we will. That concerns me a little bit.
Yeah. You good sitting in with me one more time?
Sure.
All right. She's had enough of me.
Other things going on, too.
I know. That's why I said it was Monday.
Hopeful information, guys.
Oh, you did great.
Yeah.
What you were looking for.
Very, very good explanation, Brett.
I know it's a lot, and that's why I offer up my, Rachel and I call us, because you're, I know you're gonna take this home and research it all tonight, but so tomorrow, call us if you guys have questions. It's a lot of information.
You can tell us how well you did, whether or not our eyes are glazed over or not, so.
Well, there's still questions going on. I'm completely, I'm completely.
No, it's very, very good. And we know Rachel did all the work, so.
She did.
We see you have a family.
Yeah, I would just like to make a recommendation in regards to the comments, Brett. If you're looking into Carroll County, because once somebody goes outside the state and or Iowa City or Nebraska Medical Health or Mayo, those dollars, even though there's not that many that do that, become an extreme amount. And I think that there should be a comparison there also.
Okay, yeah.
Those three, at least those three, Nebraska, Mayo, and Iowa City, if you could throw those in along with Carroll County, I think that you will get a true apples to apples in regards to your savings. And then also, I just was kind of curious, is you said that there's a two-year guarantee. Is there a cap on that third year? Because my understanding on insurance also, and I'm probably wrong, or maybe things have changed, I always thought that it was a three-year review. And if they had a high year last year and this year comes out high and we've made the change, where does that leave us next year? In our two years from now, after that cap is, you know, is there a cap?
Yeah. So, so to her point, I, I agree. We, we need to find out where, and that's why I said we would look at your top five providers with respect to where your utilization's coming from. And if it is a big enough, if I, you, you of I isn't absolutely one of our top five, then we need to absolutely include them in our discount analysis.
It's not. It's Carroll and in Des Moines.
Yeah, whoever the top five are.
Who we would.
Who we would traditionally look at. And then, so the comments of, is there a, is there a guarantee on that third year? And there's not. There's just, I mean, to even get a two-year in this space is really pretty unheard of. And I know Walmart wouldn't give a two-year, let alone a three.
Right. Well, we'll continue down this path and we'll get there.
Great.
Thanks, Brett.
Thanks.
I think today, we need to officially take action to move forward, as we spoke, to help Brett go ahead and approach Walmart.
In the form of a motion?
Yeah, I think, I think it needs to be in a motion. And I just want to have some discussion how we want to word the motion. I would think it would say that we'd give in the authority to.
Pursue the two options.
Pursue those two options.
Thank you for hearing that.
All right, I'll put that in the motion, then, I think.
And I would second that.
Okay.
Do you mind repeating that one more time?
Yeah, I didn't hear. I'm sorry.
Okay, I, I would move that we authorize Holmes-Murphy to approach Blue Cross or Walmart, I guess it is, with the HM life and the other option with Health Partners.
Yep.
To try to negotiate prices and then, we'll decide after that. But I, that's my motion for now.
Just the authority to do that?
Yes.
Yeah, I second that.
Health Partners Insurance is the same as what we've got right now, right?
Yes.
We, we hadn't duplicated the existing best.
I was talking.
Okay. Is that motion clear now?
Any other questions or comments regarding those?
The only difference would be that provider network and the discounts. But yes, as far as the benefits, plan benefits, yes.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on the floor. There's no other comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same saying? Motion to.
Okay.
Thank you, Brett.
Thanks, Rachel.
It wasn't.
Listen, the top five providers.
Okay.
Or facilities, so.
Okay.
Facilities, but not providers.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll be down to the next item is the manure management annual updates. Today, we have five of those today. The first three are with Dennis Haidoff in section 13 of Arcadia Township, section seven of Pleasant Valley Township, and also there's another one in section seven of Pleasant Valley Township. These two, three, all have changed crop rotation and use, are using manure analysis. The next one is in section one of Washington Township with Stone Path, and there's no changes on that one. And the last one is in section 31 of Roseell Township with Pig Oaks, and that one is just an original plant update. So that's all for the manure management plans. With that, we'll be down to committee reports. Neil, you want to start?
Sure, I'll basically attend at the legislative forum. And I think the main question they talked about was the state budget and primarily in relationship to education and what's the holdup. And I think the holdup is the amount of funding. One party is looking for a 2.265% increase and another 1.25% increase for education. And I, the legislatures didn't think they would need an agreement and that it would go to a conference committee. And they also stated that education's already got $100 million in additional funding and a lot of other entities had taken cuts. And they also mentioned that in regard to the budget, it was basically how you're cutting the pie. Even to make the budget match at this was gonna involve deficit spending. Not, what they meant by deficit spending is that they're going to have to use some of the money that they have in reserves to make all this happen. There's also some discussion about eminent domain that was of interest and tax increment financing. And many of you were also there, so that's my only committee report.
Neil?
Thanks, Neil.
Tuesday at CDC, they went through their financial report. We followed up on a Janet Ayde report, and she actually did a report on that. And I've got, I didn't bring that with me. I got emailed those later on. There was some interesting things in there. That was the, she toured the whole Western Ohio Vantage that day, which, prior to, done two days while she was here. There is a biogas meeting following up here this afternoon again. We had some discussions on that. Some talk on the housing study. I'm trying to do one, a county-wide one. They also had some follow-up discussion on the career fair. They had approximately 150 attended that, and they had talked us real well. On the, talked about the county roundtable meeting. We had, how good a reception they had on that. Thought that one very well. We had some discussion on Access Washington. And she also had the labor statistics. Came out again, unemployment. And Carroll's at 2.8 for the month of March. We are the second lowest in state. Lowest was 2.2, so. She talked about different projects she's been involved with, stuff like that. And it wound up, seemed like the day went fast for us. But so, she's got quite a few different projects going on. One of those is biogas and a couple restaurant projects and stuff like that, so. And then on Tuesday, or Wednesday, I went up Washington for what they did in Roseell. I think they plan on pouring again tomorrow, the south part of the East Road, that first block. And then I went through Rose, our dead of two, and that's all pretty well cleaned up. That's looking good.
Willie?
Yeah, Willie. Did I say that again?
Hit it.
I got that dead of two in my head. But that's pretty well cleaned up, so. That was my week.
Yeah, I just had the, attended the legislative forum and Neil pretty much covered what was going on there. It's hard to get, hard to get anything done down there in Des Moines, I'll tell you.
I got a question for you guys. We were there. Marty and I walked in just right after they got started. But they didn't say anything about their finish date. And I understand that the predation is May 1, but if you read Bill Heckroth, they're not gonna get done by then.
No, then it's pretty gratis.
Yeah, but I mean, but did they mention anything about getting done on time or that they thought it was gonna go long? Was there any, was there any mention about that? There wasn't there during the time we were there, but.
I don't think they plan on getting it done by May 1, and they'll be there at zero cost.
What's, what they'll do, Mark, is they'll send all of the Indians home and the cheese will center and try to pound, pound something out. And call them back.
And call them back.
Yeah.
Like, like the budget's gonna go to a conference committee.
Yeah. And I understand how it works, but I just, I was just, did they say there was any mention that it would, no, end up.
Surprising that somebody didn't bring that up.
I thought so, too. But, because it sounded like they were winding things down. Whether, you know, if they don't get something done with this education funding, then it reverts back to the 1%,
Yeah.
at which the Republicans would love. But I guess what I'm saying is, is, and then I read Bill Heckroth's report later on that afternoon, there wasn't any mention of it in the legislative update either from, from ISAC. But Bill's indicated no way it's gonna be done by May 1. So, and Bill's normally got pretty good.
I think you're probably right on that.
So.
Yeah, I didn't get there Saturday. I was out of town. I've got some grandkids, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks, Neil. Mark?
Uh, Monday was the childcare board meeting. We had to meet just a little bit early due to some training they were having there. And updates on the center. The repairs to the center with the water damage is all but done, except just some minor staining here or there. But they're, they're calling it finished and the bills are paid. They, everything finished, with everything done and everything paid for, the out-of-pocket or out-of-center repairs came up to $28,500. The annual fundraiser provided a balance of about $20,000. And then the board is gonna visit again about how much of that they want to use and apply towards this 28.5 and then how to pay the balance. There's, both banks have already said that they, you know, lend a hand there, too. So I'll be able to report on that next month. On our new business, they had an RSV breakout there. And I, I didn't know RSV. It's very late for RSV, but they had two rooms with 16 children involved, 12 of which were diagnosed with it, and all but three have returned back to the center. But it was rather serious. RSV is extremely contagious and you can catch, it's airborne, you know, so I mean, it, you can have.
Rhinovirus.
Yeah, yeah. Rhino something virus, rhino, yeah. Emily had it when she was little, and it's a scary thing. They had talked about a staff requested leave of absence, had been a long-term staff member, has a daughter that had twins with some complications and wants to help out. And so they granted that. And then there was a issue about a two-year-old that hurt his leg, had a broken tibia. And then so that involved the DHS to do a full report on it. And they're handling that internally with the staff. And that was, they reviewed the financials. The financials were as good as they could be. And that was the end of that. And then on Saturday, it was a legislative forum. And then, if anybody's going to this Prairie Rivers, I know you got invited, I don't know if anybody else got invited, but it's a thing at the Historical Society. It's the one that said that the invitation, the meeting was at 6:30 AM.
Six AM?
It is PM.
Okay, that's tomorrow, isn't it?
Yeah, it's tomorrow. And it is PM. I just heard back from them this morning. So if anybody wants to attend that, it's 6:30 PM.
6:30 PM, you can make that.
Oh, I'm good with the meeting.
That was my week.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Last Wednesday, went into Region 12, signed checks there. On Thursday, followed up with DNR, Dan Olson, on the site investigation for the Stangl site review. People be getting back to me. They just got the application last Wednesday. So as soon as they get a, a person assigned to it, they seem to get back in touch with me and hopefully get that done there in the next week or 10 days.
If you need somebody to help you with that, I would really like, would appreciate helping with that.
The site review.
Site review.
Yeah. As soon as I hear anything, I'll let everybody know.
Get a chance to do, you know,
Yeah.
to do that, to experience that, so.
Yeah, we'll do that. As soon as we get a date set up, I'll let everybody know. And then, in the meantime, I've been kind of working on, with Rick Hanziker a little bit, on the Access Washington trip. I brought up the group homes for the mental health issue. I'm trying to kind of put things together. I'm gonna try and get in touch with Don on that, just so we can get some language put together at the chamber once that, this week, so they can get that put together.
Yeah, there's some rough language in there.
Right. So I'm kind of working on that.
But is that going to help out more than just one organization?
Basically, yeah. We'll see. What it all boils down to is the transition. And we, I think we need to look at something as far as finding some funding to move forward with it. And it's gonna come down from, around a federal level. And they're dealing the cards. And I think we need to stand behind what they're doing at this point. I mean, they kept the federal funding with the Medicare and that stuff. And I think it's time that we step up to the plate and try and get something worked through and get some answers. And then, also had the legislative forum on Saturday, talked a little bit about that. I kind of raised the question about the Des Moines Water Works issue. And that came down to a money, nothing's really gonna happen there. And in the meantime, I went home after that and read Iowa Soybean put out a letter, and Roger Wolf had a good ass looking for it this morning. I couldn't find it. But supposedly Iowa Soybean Association's put about 40 million into water shake projects and for clean water. And it's kind of interesting how that's being played out in Des Moines Water Works doesn't even look at that issue. So that's basically.
They have been, or are they going to?
They are going to put 40 million into it. So.
Yeah, again, Ben, on all that same subject, I see evidently SAG and the Ohio Drains Districts got something worked out or something that would be sent out.
Yeah, that was on the radio last week. So, yeah, we'll be getting something here in the next week or two weeks, probably.
Roger was suggested to me by, you know, someone that I had reached out to to learn more about this issue. And said Roger's very well-read on the subject.
I'm sure he is. I used to work with Roger, he used to work with the MRCS.
He's got a good background.
His issue.
Yeah. So, that's all I have. Courtney?
I have one thing. I got a phone call right before the board meeting from Angela Chandler. She said they had an employee resign over there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, they, she said that you sat in on interviews, Marty,
Right.
and that there was another candidate that they really liked.
Yeah.
So what they're wondering is if they have to put that back in the newspaper, or can they just post it and use their qualified candidates?
We'll have to repost it.
Yeah. Well, I knew they had to repost it, but she wanted to make sure that they didn't have to put it back in the paper and everything. Because I know.
That's, that's what repost, yeah.
Well, Dave hasn't done that. You know, I, I was thinking, as long as you had it posted, that the, the position was available, that you could use the candidate list.
John will answer that for us officially.
Yeah. Well, she was asking if we want to, and I don't know who wants to talk to her, one of either, I know you two sit on the board, but Marty was in on the interviews. So we want to talk to her and maybe just.
I'll be glad to.
Okay.[1775.62]